Okay. I think I'm gonna regret it.
You don't even need to regret it. It doesn't even require an RSVP.
Okay.
All they want's your money. I'm not joking. That's all they want's your money.
I'd probably rather go to the Taste of Jefferson City or something.
Yeah, you guys will need to... Here's the sheet. So, for Taste of Jeff City, we get ten free tickets.
Oh, okay.
So, the three of you should probably definitely go, which you guys have always done anyway.
Yeah.
And then, how you allocate the other seven is just totally a commission decision.
It's been Department heads before?
We've done elected officials, we've invited people, we've disinvited people, so...
It's kind of a fiasco to me. I mean, we got twenty, thirty people standing in line greeting all these people and it's like...
It would be a lot easier if they would just do... So, there's five sponsors. There's the city, the county, Lincoln University, the school district, and Lynn State. Those are the five sponsors. It would sure be a lot easier if each of the five sponsors just delegated one person to stand in line and welcome everybody. But we end up with this gauntlet.
So, each of them get ten people, so they're just fifteen?
Yes.
Most people don't stand in line.
Can't duck in the side door?
Yeah, they...
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, you don't have to...
Have you been to Taste of Jeff City before?
Long time ago.
It's a gr- I mean, it's a fun event to go to.
Yeah, it's...
I have always worked the door because I always felt in my posi- in our, soon to be your position...
Are we one of the sponsors?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I always felt in our position that the presi- the presiding commissioner probably ought to be at the front door.
Okay, then I would... Yeah, I would... Okay.
And what it is, is all the legislators, all the legislators, the elected offici- state elected officials and the Supreme Court judges, we invite.
Yeah.
And we just greet them as they come in.
I know a lot, yeah, I know a lot of them.
And that's how it was for me. I knew about...
I know a lot of them.
The first year I went up there, I knew probably better than seventy percent of people walking in the door.
Well, Bob Dixon was down at MAC and, of course, he's a customer of mine, so I...
You'll know a lot of people.
And Kraus was down there and he's a customer of mine and...
Shall we go on the record?
It's just sixty dollars a ticket, so not the average Joe comes.
All right, I call a commission order. Do we have any minutes, reports?
Yes, we have.
From? Just tell us who it's from.
The Treasurer's.
Treasurer's monthly report? It's a... Usually, Michelle, I just report that I received the Treasurer's report or... And that way, that way, it's on the record, so everybody knows. Piece of cake. Uh, first item on the agenda is a resolution for Cole County Extension Center. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Cole County Extension Center.
So moved.
Second, call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Jeff's not here, but he voted yes, too. I can see by his signature. Resolution's approved for the Cole County Extension Center. I presume Jeff will be delivering that.
Yeah.
Signing of title for remount of EMS. Because we have to do a remount, we actually have to sign the title, so I entertain a motion to approve the signing of the title.
Okay, so we're buying a new vehicle and having the old box put on it?
Right. So, we have to sign the title on the old truck, for lack of a better word.
What are we doing with the old... Is this to get rid of the old truck?
Yeah, they... That's part of the price.
Okay, so it's a trade-in?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the limited value of what the trade-in is on it.
So moved.
Second, call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. All right, my roll call, the title's approved. One of the oddities of this job, we have to, since we own the vehicles, we have to sign all the titles before anything can be done with them.
Have we taken possession of that yet?
It's at, well, I called Mike yesterday to find out if I could drop insurance where it was and he said it's already down at O Sage Ambulance, so they're actually...
But we haven't taken possession of the new one yet.
No.
And we haven't paid for it yet.
They won't finish it and they won't release it until they get it.
So, and to sign a title, we have to have a roll call vote. Those odd things we've...
So, do we have a... I mean, so we sold that vehicle and signed that title. Do we have a contract with them for the new ambulance that shows that they're taking possession of this one and they're gonna deliver us a new one?
I have to check with Jennifer if you guys actually signed a contract when you awarded that bid. It's been a while back, so I'm not really...
I mean, I think we should have one.
Should be a contract. I mean...
I'll check.
Can't just sign that over and say...
We can't. An award of a bid, award of, an award of a bid is not sufficient to issue a pay order.
No, and Jennifer knows that, so I'm thinking, but what vehicle, I don't know.
But I mean, we had a...
Because I know when we bought the, the last time, I remember voting and signing was buying the two. And we did have a contract for those.
Never done the chassis.
And I'm just, yeah. So, this is just a little bit odd, but, I mean, you'd think that you'd sign that title over and you'd sign the new title and write them a check. I mean, normally...
You don't sign the new title. They sign the title.
Well, but you'd receive...
Right, the new title.
New title and you'd issue them a check and that would all be done at once.
Yeah, and we are getting a new title.
I'm just saying, we've signed over the old one, once we give it to them. But if we don't have anything, it says we're getting the new one or we have a contract that's binding, they could say, "What? What are you talking about?" Because that's in next year's budget, is that remount.
How long does the remount last? Like, how long?
About five years. It's, it's... So, basically, what we're doing is we're rotating, we're on a five-year per-vehicle replacement plan. And we can, a remount, the box is good for about ten, is good for between ten and fifteen years. You either get one or two remounts per box, depending the condition of the box. Plus, it also depends on what, assuming that, we have Chevys, don't we?
Mostly Chevy.
Assuming Chevy keeps their chassis the same and the boxes will remount. At one point, a number of years ago, I can't remember if we had...
We had Fords and Chevys.
We had Fords and Chevys, but it was, when Cap Region still had it, but we were negotiating the transfer, one of the companies changed their chassis. And it precluded remounting on those because there was no, that the box would not fit on the new chassis. Maybe it was International Harvester.
That could have been.
We had two of those. We had those two IHs. Any of it. So, what we do is, we bought the new ones and we've now bought, all the ambulances are new, for lack of a better term. The oldest one that we bought is now ready to remount.
And that's just a 2010, so...
Yeah. And the, and it's because they run them.
How many miles a year do we put on those?
Actually, that title ought to... They didn't write the year, the mileage on it?
Um, probably fifteen to twenty. I mean, I think we're probably hundred and fifty thousand miles, but, you know, they're... When I run them, I don't run them.
Yeah, they're hard miles.
Yeah, they run them.
So, so that, that hit, the part of, part of our commitment when we took over the ambulance system was, we would improve the vehicle fleet. We would improve the entire service, the component that was improving the vehicle fleet. So, you know, Cap Region, because of cost and money, had reached a point where they were unable to replace. So, the ambulances were getting pretty long in the tooth. And they, so that was part of the deal, that we promised voters, is not only would we assume the ambulance service, we'd make it a lot better.
Or get a lot better.
And we've done a lot better, yeah. Because we've got the...
They got one in Brazito.
Apache Flats, one at the jail, twelve hours a day, and then three, three or four...
Isn't there one in County Fire?
It's in Apache Flats.
Brazito?
Brazito, yeah, he said Brazito. And I think there's three or four at the main base. I can't remember how many are on the main base.
I think there's one out of Easton, according to...
No, that one's gone.
Was that gone?
When we based here, we were having issues with basing at Jeff City Fire. They weren't playing nice and sandbox with us. They wanted us to pay for a...
I thought there was one out by County Park with that car.
Mm-mm, yeah. They, they wanted us to pay for a new fire facility, which they would put, gratuitously put an ambulance bay in if we'd kick a half million dollars in. Yeah. So, they went ahead and built their own fire station. There's no ambulance bay with it. But we, we had a Sally Port we could park it in.
I think they, didn't they end up building the ambulance bay and we just aren't using it, or...
I don't know if they built it or not. We told them we had no, we would not base or nor work with them out there.
Yeah, I don't know. I just thought that they...
So, they wanted us to pay for it.
There's a new hardened nine-one-one center out there.
Yeah, supposedly. Okay, so, the only other item is budget, so, Michelle, you're welcome to stay or leave, however you wish. Just leave the system on and when we recess, we'll let you know.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
So, you wanna do some of the easier parts before Jeff gets here, or do you wanna just go to the Sheriff's Department?
Well, I mean, we were kinda left off in the Sheriff's Department. Just soon get through that, if we can. Um, let me try calling Jeff real quick. See how much longer he thinks it's gonna be.
Debbie, the other day, you said that we had given the Sheriff a hundred and forty thousand per capital. Was that this year for those trucks, right, at one-time cost?
This year is capital in that long-term thing. Really bigger this year than it's probably been and see...
So, where does, do they just have a certain amount of capital that they get in their budget every year, then?
It was basically, you know, a lot we could afford and, yeah.
I realize that, but I mean, they're, they're gonna buy some cars. They had a capital expenditure for cars. That money's just in their budget?
Yeah.
They have a capital improvement, Sheriff, money in their budget.
And we started that.
That we lumped all of their capital into the budget, so whether they are...
Right, but I'm just saying, they're just coming out of law enforcement sales tax or, or something.
It is, yes, it has been the last couple of years.
They've got a lump sum that they get every year.
We started that in 2013, actually, taking it out of their law enforcement fund. Before that, they were, the fund was really not good, you know, so we were, we were paying it out of our capital. So, they were still getting the vehicles, the last three years now. The first year, there was, we put that big five hundred and twenty-seven thousand and then we were four, and 2014, it was two hundred and seventy-two. And with the money we put over there this year, they're at three hundred and sixty-three, that they've spent. I think they...
But that's just our general, coming out of GR, that's the two million and forty-five.
Um, no, that's the, no, what I was talking about, the capital that we've spent so far.
We haven't put capital out of GR, out of the sales tax in for a coup- three years?
Right, three years.
Three years.
Thirteen of them, we would have did that in the law enforcement.
Okay, so twelve was last year we spent money out of capital improvements for the Sheriff.
Yes.
Out of our side, yes.
Our capital, yeah.
Yes.
Well, what do you wanna do?
What we can do?
I texted Jeff, I called Jeff, didn't get an answer. He's still in Campo, they're still going.
Oh, wow.
Um, I asked him how much longer and whether he wanted us just to kinda go ahead. He hasn't texted me back yet, so I would say, let's go ahead.
Let's skip Sheriff then, though.
Okay, what do you wanna do?
Um, I don't know.
Start the beginning of the book and work our way through, that's the easy way.
It's fine.
So, first item is county auditor. Funny how that works out.
I was like, let's...
How'd you put, why'd you put yourself up front?
I don't remember.
Starts with an A, huh?
Hey, so how much did you put in your salaries for your new spot?
Um, I did not change our salary.
No good.
So, whatever.
There is the cola in there for the month that it goes, but other than that, I did not change, but...
So, whatever, you're gonna take Jim's spot and whatever you were making, you'll bring somebody in at that or...
Is there anything you changed? Is there anything you changed of substance?
Um, no, actually, I reduced meetings and travel.
I saw that, big time. Uh, bonds, new bond, yeah.
Bonds can come out, because I paid it already for the four years.
Oh, really?
Yes, so that might come out.
Oh, you paid it for how many years?
I'm not done.
So, one time for you.
And, um, office supplies did go up some, only because...
Yeah, but you dropped meeting and travel, big time.
Yeah, and then printing and binding went up a hundred, just because printing is a budget box, it's getting more...
Can't we just go electronic?
I'm hoping next year that we will, but...
See, I don't even know why we need paper anymore.
Yeah, I mean, next year, hopefully with the system, it will be scanned behind every line item, so you can go in the system and look behind it. Everyone will have to scan their information behind it.
Office equipment, furniture?
Um, it's just chairs. I did not get prices.
But I thought we put that in capital.
Yeah, so that's why it's out here.
Got it, capital, okay. Anything else? Oh, you're easy.
I'm good.
Collector?
We just took out bonds.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sam, did you have anything else for her?
No, no.
Yeah, just take that.
She's good and easy.
No, I like you.
Marvin, why are you over here?
Well, that's your hearing, right?
No, what's up? Do you need something?
Yes, my girls want to talk with, they did some, uh, doing, doing some work yesterday. They went back and did a lot of research on our new machines that we need and why we need them. And they would like to come and present their case to you, and I have to agree with them.
Now, we did research, um, the legal side of it. We also talked to Mark Rhodes, who's the clerks.
I know, but...
And there is no requirement for a paper ballot?
That, not yet, but it's...
It's failed five years in a row.
It may make it this time, and if it does, and right now...
But there's also supposed to be money, if it goes, there's supposed to be money, the state's gonna appropriate money to pay for the machines.
Well, they've been trying to do that for a while, too, and that hasn't happened.
Rhodes' advice was, we shouldn't do anything immediately, we should wait and see what happens during session.
Well, I agree with you immediately, but I think, I think you need to consider it the first of next year, and there's many reasons why.
First of fifteen?
Yes, because they need...
But the legislative session's not over till May.
I know it.
So, we gotta see what they do in legislative session.
You need to look at, at the situation that they're gonna have to have these machines.
Right.
And they can use what they got for this April election.
Well, they'll have to, no matter what.
Yeah, they're going to, because there's no way they can get them. But they, they do need, if they're going to, have to have the new machines by August. And the reasons for, yeah, I don't, I know you're looking at me and why...
There's no election August.
No, you, well, Mark, you just don't get a machine and say, "Okay, here it is." They have to be trained on it first.
There's no election this August. The election you're talking about is August to sixteen, so you're telling me it's gonna take a year to train people how to operate a machine?
It's gonna, they're gonna have to learn theirselves.
What are you gonna do from August to December?
There's nothing in August and December.
But how are you gonna train them for a March election, or...
If you don't train them, because you're gonna have to train them.
There's no March elections on April.
Yeah, but in January...
March and April.
There's no March election.
In sixteen.
It's sixteen, there's a March election.
The presidential primary.
Right, that's what we're saying. You're gonna, the staff's gonna have to learn how to operate the machines first, and then, you're gonna have to come in there...
We need to have Jeff in this discussion, when he gets back from Campo. We'll call you, as soon as he gets back, I'll, we'll send somebody over and get you. Is that fair enough?
Because this needs, I think you...
Because I don't vote on this issue and I feel like I'm now monopolizing all the time on this discussion.
But, I think you have...
And Jeff needs to hear it.
There's a lot of things you need to know, what goes, we just, you just don't have a machine and we go out and set it up and we have an election. There's too many other things behind the scene that you all don't know what happens.
I just, you know, I will say one more time what I said before. If we can go to electronic machines where we don't have to spend two hundred thousand dollars per general election to order paper ballots, we should definitely look down that path. The cost savings is astronomical when I look at the budget cost for printing ballots.
I agree with you.
And Elkins Swires is, you know, they are gonna do everything they can to convince us it's a bad idea. They're probably the company that's pushing the legislation to get paper ballots required.
Well, I think, I don't think that they're pushing it, but I think the legislators are. They'd like to see the paper ballots. And if I was in St. Louis and had to do the recount, that they had to do the recount from their paper trails, it would've been a nightmare if we hadn't got all the exceptions that we got to do that, to do that recount with. Because if they were gonna make us go in there and do all the Dems, all the Republicans and all the Libertarians and everything, and even all the petitions, when the recount only considered was the only thing on it was the petition. We had, we had to get exceptions from the challenger and the, uh, person that, whoever put that on the ballot. We just couldn't say, "Okay, we're just only gonna count the amendments."
Let's take this one, we get Jeff in here.
So, we need to come back when Jeff gets here.
Jeff's just had a Campo meeting and running behind this morning, so maybe...
That's all right, but, you know, I don't, we, I don't want you guys to leave without giving the girls a chance, because they have researched it.
I talked to Dawn and Marla yesterday and they filled me in a little bit, so...
And we actually start voting in March, Janu- like, January twenty-sixth, so...
And when we say March, that means in February, they got a training, but they need to know how to work those machines a lot better than when it comes out and say, "Okay, we gotta train you on these machines. You better know what you're doing."
Yeah, because we're gonna have to be trained and then we're gonna have to train all the coworkers.
Right, you gotta know how to train other people.
Right, so, that's what, what I'm saying. I mean, I don't care if you don't put them, you know, the only thing I'm saying is, put the money out there, let it be there. If they're gonna have to use it, they can use it. If they don't use it, they don't use it. You know, and, and every one of the, sits in here knows that on elections, if we don't use that money that we have in elections, we give it back. We've never spent the election money.
Right.
So, we've always given that back. And I think that if, knowing Steve like I do, and I think if you didn't use the money, he'd give it back. I don't think they would use it.
Right. I mean, just not using it. I mean, it's not really money going out.
Yeah.
But, but it's just saving the county money.
But I think, but I, I really, really feel that the money should be put in there for them to have, because when they get to 2016, it's gonna be a big election. I guarantee you that. And they've changed the prefer, primary to, uh, March, and they're gonna have two elections going at one time, March and April. So, you know, it's gonna be a busy, busy time for them in that period of time.
I agree, so...
Just don't count us out yet.
We're not counting you out. I don't think anybody's counting you out.
I kinda understand Mark, where if we can break the rules.
Look at our child in the hall.
But they're, yeah, but they're not, the electronics are not, are going by the wayside. They're not, they're not gonna, their touchscreens, I don't think you're gonna see much of.
But what happens if you all go to the touchscreen and then the law does change in a year or two, then...
Well, they've grandfathered that, according to what Jill's done, so...
Yeah, they're grandfathered in for that. If they wanna keep their touchscreens, they can. Go get Marla.
I got a resolution to, whenever we get...
We already passed it. You didn't vote, but we, we, uh...
I voted for you.
We're doing, uh...
We voted for you since you signed it.
Actually, it's fair to read that we're gonna be presenting it at, but we wanted it signed this year, if this is there.
Marvin's here.
I see him.
And Dawn and, uh, Dawn and Marla are gonna come over there and talk about this voting machines a little bit.
You know I never give up, Jeff.
Oh, man.
You'll be glad to see me gone.
Oh, I don't know.
Who am I gonna torture today? I don't get to see Barbie anymore either.
Eleven days?
See, I told them for the month.
Oh, working days. That's what I'm saying.
He's counting better than you.
I got twenty days left, and I try to figure out where you got eleven. I know, you know, some, is there a trick out there I don't know about?
You need to go back to school and learn how to count, right?
No, I'm not gonna say anything. I'm gonna let the girl say anything. If I disagree, then I'll open my mouth. Otherwise, I'm gonna shut up.
Just grab a microphone down there, if you would.
Yeah, we are streaming.
Do you, I mean, I know on the video, you wanted to talk later, so I don't know if you want us just to come back and...
No, 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 you're here. We were waiting for, we, we didn't know when Jeff was gonna be back, so...
Okay, that's fine, I just thought...
Yeah, I think it's critical that Jeff's be involved in this discussion, because these three guys are voting on it, and they need to all have an understanding of what you all are saying.
That's fine. Well, excuse me if I blow up here.
Keep it brief, we're gonna have a lot to say.
All right, so, my main concern is that you guys consider putting money in the budget for new machines. When Mr. Coursemire was in last week, he hasn't even okayed going to Elkins. He's wanting to see other voting machines. There are other companies out there. I don't know that we need this exact dollar in the budget, but we just want you to consider putting money out there so that we can get new voting equipment. There may be money coming from the state. We don't know if there is or if there's not, but we feel like the equipment that we have, we're starting to have problems with it. And it would be nice to have it replaced with something new and better. I don't know that we're saying right now, we're buying, we want to purchase this equipment and we need two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We don't have a bid from Atkins. We have a bid from Elkins, but there's also a company in Missouri named Atkins, and there is a company, ESNS, which is out of Omaha. We do not have bids from those people, so we don't even know an exact dollar amount we need. But we would like to at least look into new equipment of some sort. We do have a bid from Elkins, from Dominion Voting, so we do have a price from them. They have offered that there is a three-year financing available from them, which I know from Chris, that that's not really anything you're interested in. Elkins said if they, if we purchase upfront, all cash, we're paying for it, they give a ten percent discount off the top of the, the price.
Just, just to correct you a little bit, it's not that I'm not interested in the financing.
Right, but he says you don't think you can do it.
We can encumber the county for multiple years, right?
It's, I mean, you can. It's a debt, and it actually has to be reported as a debt.
Right, so...
But the reality is, it makes no sense to do that.
Right.
If we have, why if you have a...
You know, we should always be looking at a cash basis, if we have the ability to, and we have cash. It's not, it's just, the issue that we debated, I don't know if you watched the video from...
Some of it, I didn't get to watch the whole thing.
I mean, the issue's real simple, um, and, and I can't speak for these two, no offense intended, but Chris and I, I think, are of one mind. We'd much rather see electronic machines and get away from printing paper ballots, because... So, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take. I know you guys are kicking some money in. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for these machines. And every two years, it's two hundred thousand dollars to print ballots. If we could go to electronic machines, and let's say they're four hundred thousand dollars, say they're more expensive. I have no idea. I'm just hypothetically, they're more expensive. Well, after you have one general election year, you know, you just save two hundred thousand dollars by, and after you have two general election years, you just saved as much as the entire machine's cost. And there's no law that requires paper ballots, we checked.
Right.
There have been legislative attempts to do it, and they have failed every time. I presume the county clerks will continue to oppose it. I know that, I would assume the commissioners would oppose it. Don't wanna spend the money, I mean, this is a great cost-saving opportunity by going to electronic.
I, the, Elkins Swires had given us a bid on, would be kinda considered like a touchscreen, but those machines are seventy-two hundred dollars a piece compared to, um, four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a piece. Which, on the, if we even looked at going to the touchscreens, you also would have to have up to twenty, maybe, in a precinct, depending on how big the precinct is. Where these other ones, you just have to have one.
So...
That is one cost. I mean, that's one thing to think about, you know, with those. If you have a big precinct and you have several thousand people that vote at that precinct, I know they wouldn't all show up at the same time. But you also would have to make sure you have enough machines that you don't have hours of waiting to get to those five, ten, fifteen, twenty machines.
That was the purpose of these dual machines, why the disabled person could do the listening and hear and vote, people could just keep inserting their ballots on the other side. But if you have to have everybody stand in line to vote on, on that machine, there's just no way unless you do, like you do the privacy boost now and have, you know, ten to twenty at a place. So, you're really, it's gonna be a lot bigger expense if you have to house that many at the, each place.
I don't think it's a bad idea putting some money aside for machines. We're gonna need the machines at some point, anyway. We don't have to pick what we're doing right now. But I think we need to put something in there. It's no different than capital improvements. We gotta have something in there, be looking towards the future, so I, that's just where I stand on it. Just, we, we could put money in there, have it taxed for that, and then whenever it comes to that time, then we can decide what we're doing with it.
I mean, we know that, we've already, I mean, we talked to Elkins, they're our vendor now. There is no way for us to even use them in April. There's not enough time for the training and the poll worker training and everything, but if it's a possibility that we could get new equipment, next year would be the year to get it, so that we're trained. We have time to train our poll workers and we get all that finished, so that in March of sixteen, we would be ready to go. We can't really... We can't really, it's not feasible to wait till 16 to okay the money and try to get the equipment in and us be able to use it in March and April.
But if we okay half of it for this year, for 2015.
Are you timed? Okay.
And then half of it for 2016, and have them on order, and, you know, take delivery of it in January of 2016.
Well, they're saying now, I mean, it, even if we wanted to try to get them for April of 15, there's not time now, and we're looking at December of 14, and they're saying there's no way it can be ready for 15. I don't know that we could get it in January of 16 and be ready for March of 16.
We could sign the contract on January 1 of 15, saying we want half of them delivered this year, and then the other half, we want delivered in the first week of January of 2016, so they know a year and a half ahead of time.
Absolutely, you could do that.
So, I see what you're saying.
Then you could get half of them and train on them. I mean, I don't think you need to train on every one, but, I mean, I know you're gonna have to go through them all.
Does it take three months to set them all up, or is it something you can plug in, hit a couple buttons, and they're ready to go? Or do you know right offhand? Surely it'll take three months.
Well, I know when, when we went to the new optical scan, the optical scans that we have now, when we went from punch card to optical scan, Elkins, the vendor, actually came up here and did the actual poll worker training, trained us, and then they actually came up and they actually did the training for the poll workers also.
Yeah, but you'd have machines next year already. What I'm talking about is getting the actual physical machines, half of them. You can train on those half.
Right.
When you get the other half, how long does it take to set up? Plug it in, they're ready to go?
I would say yes, but I, I'm not sure. That would be something we would have to talk to the vendor. And going back to the whole thing, I, I'm not even sure what, what Mr. Course Meyer has planned, if he's wanting to vi, go visit Elkins and Atkins and look at both equipment and make his own decision on what he wants, so. But I would think with either vendor, that would, we'd have to talk to the vendors to see how they would wanna handle it, but. I know in the, yesterday when you guys were kinda talking, you had asked if, I don't know which one of you had suggested maybe having like the city precincts use one kind of machine and the county precincts use the other kind of machine. And Elkins said that's not a good idea, because then you don't have any way to add your votes together from the two different kinds of machines, you know. It's like, if you're gonna do it, you probably should go all to one machine and not try to have two different kinds of machines going out there at one time, so.
Well, no offense to incoming, um, candidates or positions, but y'all have been around it, you've been around it, your recommendation right now is gonna hold a hell of a lot more water to me than, I mean, even staff recommendations around here. That's, that's just gonna be what I'm gonna be looking at the most. And taking into the fact that it takes, you know, six months or eight months to get those machines, we have to think about that if we're gonna do that, but.
And that is something I can find out from Elkins is how, you know, how long a time. I just would appreciate if you would at least consider putting something in the budget.
I.
For the new machines.
I would support putting something in the budget.
Me too.
But I think there's a lot of investigation to be done before anything gets purchased.
I'm fine with us putting half of this in it for this coming year, and then with the intentions of putting the other half in next year, and if we decide to do it, the money's there. If we don't do it.
Yeah, but Jeff, you can't, you can't put that money, you can't spend that money in, uh, 15, 16 until the budget's approved, and usually they don't approve that until somewhere in the last of January.
Capital improvements budget, I mean, let's, let's just get down to brass tacks, is controlled by the commission. So if we decide that it makes more sense to buy them all next, you guys decide it makes more sense to buy them all next year, you just move money around and you buy them all next year. If it turns out, we put 110,000 in this year, and we decide that works and we can do the second shot in 16, that's great. And if we decide, no, we need to get them all this year, we just move stuff around in our budget.
Okay.
You know, we do a budget adjustment. We've done that. With capital improvements, we do it all the time, because, you know, that, that, that budget is kinda, the courthouse side of capital improvements is a pretty movable, moving object, yeah. Fluid, good work.
So you wouldn't necessarily be putting the money into the county clerk budget. You're looking at the capital improvements budget.
Absolutely. It would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz if we decide we're not gonna do it at all.
Right, then it's, right.
But I think it's a good idea to have money sitting there, cuz it's gonna happen at some point.
Right.
So.
And I can ask Elkins about that. I mean, I wouldn't know. I don't, I'm not sure if it will affect the, our bid amount that we're gonna get from them. I don't know if they're giving us some kind of price break because we're ordering 40 at one time rather than ordering 20 and 20 or, you know.
That's part of investigative stuff we need to look into.
Right, and I, I can ask them about that. I'm not sure how that works, if this bid amount is because we're ordering X amount of machines or not, so.
I would be curious to know how much we spent on repairing the old machines, too. I know you said we had four of them that had to go by.
Right, oh, I mean, I went through and looked since we've gotten these, and we've, at this point, we've spent $5,275 on just repair. And so, like I said, we've got another four or five that is getting repaired now since we know that we can't have new machines for, or it's not gonna work to have new ones next year, so we have to go ahead and get those fixed. So it's, if they can fix them internally at their office, it's a little bit cheaper, but when they're, it's too major and they have to ship it off, it's, their vendor, you know, charges them and it gets backcharged us, so.
Yeah, how much that will be getting fixed now, uh, the next voting cycle, we may have 16 that break down, or may not have any.
Yeah, cuz I have several, cuz I keep track of what's broke down. I have one machine that's broke down four times already, and we just have to keep taking it back and paying to get it fixed.
I, I would, I would strongly suggest we think outside the box on this some, too. Because we have a habit, you guys do too, and we all do. We're kinda consistent with what we're used to, and we're happy with it, and we like it, and we know it works, and, and that's sometimes short-term wise and long-term foolish. We oughta look at things like getting iPads or tablets to put in these, in the voting booths and let people vote on tablets. I mean, that's the next, I mean, that's where it's gonna go. Unless we get online voting, the long-term trend is gonna be towards totally electronic voting. It's gonna be tablet-based or something even smaller perhaps, and we need to look at whether that technology exists now or not, as opposed to saying, well, we know the, we know the old system works, we just need to upgrade it, let's go with that. Let's look long-term. I mean, you guys had these machines for 10, 12 years.
About that.
Whatever we buy, you gotta kinda look out 10, 12 years. Is it gonna work? Or are we gonna be sitting here, are you guys gonna be sitting here four years from now going, well? You know, the feds have now announced that we have to go to all electronic voting, we have to put iPads in. Sorry, guys, we got these really pretty new machines we can't use anymore.
But on these machines that we're using right now, the county has not paid any money for them whatsoever.
Those are all HAVA machines, but, but there're no, there're no federal money coming down in the future.
No, there's no federal money, so, but that's where they came from, and that's how we got involved with the DREs is all, because of the federal government, and that's why they purchased them.
And I think that's the reason online voting's gonna become a lot more prevalent.
Oh, I think you're gonna see that.
Because online voting's cheap compared to this stuff.
I think you're gonna see that, if not, not by telephone even.
Because it's cheap.
And one of these days, it's gonna happen.
So, there are lots of ways of verification. There are lots of systems that do it currently. You can do geolocation, you can do self-identifiable PIN. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do.
I think there is a state, but I'm not sure which one does online voting.
I was thinking Oregon did it.
There's one of them that does.
I think Oregon maybe has online voting. Don't hold me in that. There's, there is a state that's doing it.
Yeah, there's a state that does it.
Well, why don't we put 110,000 into capital improvements to, as a place, it's effectively a placeholder, and then when the new year gets going, you guys can start exploring. Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
It's fine with me. At least it's in there.
Right, at least, at least we know that.
I mean, it gives you a commit, you know there's a commitment to getting it done, getting something done. At least you get a commitment to getting something done.
Yeah, you're getting something in there, but you know, you know me, Mark.
Sometimes you push too hard, you get nothing, though.
I don't care.
Yeah, that squeaky wheel doesn't always get oil. Sometimes it gets replaced.
Exactly.
We'll, we'll take them with us.
I will take it. I, I, I have to argue.
Take them with us.
I don't ha, I don't have, uh, have anything in this fight.
I'm sure you'll have another visit with our new county clerk.
I will say, thanks, gentlemen. I appreciate you listening to my staff. They know about.
You have, you have very good people over there.
I agree with you.
And, you know, I, I will say that particularly when it comes to elections, you guys do a fantastic job at elections. I mean, you really do. We've not had the problems in this community that so many other places have had in the courses of elections. And that's not technology, that's persons.
That's persons. I agree with you.
Thanks, Marvin. Thank you.
Thanks, Marvin. Okay, collector revenue. That's what we're up to. We did auditor.
All right.
We gave her a $10,000 bonus. We had.
We didn't vote on it, yeah.
We had to figure there's something that you could vote on. So collector revenue.
Um, again, there's not any difference in the revenue that we saw or that he was concerned about. I think the first budget issue, that budget, just so you guys know, at the bottom dollar, it has to stay at the same amount. This is the only department, only elected official. We have to, we cannot change this.
357, 358, right?
That's right.
357, 358.
We're gonna see another.
Next page. That number cannot change, can never go down.
It can't go down.
That's an expense?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the law. Darn collectors.
And then if you raise it up, then it can't go down.
And then if you raise it, yeah, it can't go back.
Again, so.
Did he, I don't remember him having any problem with anything.
I don't have any changes written down, so.
So, I see you got salaries up, so did he decrease some of his other warrants here?
Yes, I, I did decrease some of his others, but during his budget hearing, he didn't have any of the work.
Okay.
Enough to complain about.
And whatever you guys do with salaries, I'll plug in there, and then the difference, I usually adjust in his professional service.
Works for me.
Okay.
Good?
Yep.
Good?
Heck, I'd be fine if we increased the salary, but it increases the bottom line. I mean, that's, but if he's fine with where it's at, I'm fine with it too. He does all the job.
He does a good job. Sam? Good?
I know if he actually needed some, he'd come up and ask, and I'd be hard pressed to say no.
The other two funds for the collector are internal slush funds. We don't do anything with them. I'm sorry, text, text me. It's a slush fund. They do, he gets it, we can't do anything with it.
True.
He's been very good about helping contribute things from it, though.
Yeah.
So.
And I will make the changes in there based on the carryforward balances.
County treasurer.
The treasurer, I had nothing, Mark, except for the salary issue, and whether you wanna get into that now or later, and his office equipment that he, um.
What's he went for office equipment?
What'd he say?
Credenza and a chair for Eric. Credenza.
In his office.
We, we told him to get a price on it, and so he had had what he wanted it.
Put it out there in capital, and we'll see if we do that or not.
That's another one of those building issues, just kinda sticks under buildings, so. Okay?
I haven't seen his chair either.
Then we have the school fund, which is an in-and-out account.
Not when you will see a big change in, um, the rural utility taxes, that $2 million. Um, we've decided that the collector is going to distribute that with his normal distribution because of his new system that makes it easier.
Okay.
Um, so you do see a big drop in that.
And that's okay? Doesn't matter at all to do it that way?
Yes, no one.
Super.
Jill's looked at it, the auditors have looked at it.
Treasurer's good with it?
Took a little convincing, but yeah.
I'm good with it then. He didn't, he didn't, he doesn't get to go hand out checks personally?
Well, he still has financial institution tax that's fine with him.
Not, nothing like the $2 million, though.
Okay. Tax over plus, is that an in-and-out account?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the people that, um, on tax sale, they pay over their tax amount on sale. It gets held for a certain number of years if they come back and want it back.
So property owners can actually come back and.
That's the three-year buyback period that's by statute. Okay.
I'm sure it's still three.
County clerk.
County clerk, um, again, the salaries, we can talk about at the end. He did want an additional $25 in publications to 225.
And 500 for education and training.
Yes.
I think that was it.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Well, I was gonna go to, uh, he's got a position open now, well, two positions open. And one of them used to be under our IT guy, and with the new computer system and stuff coming, I don't know if it'd be, wouldn't be a bad idea to move somebody back under Dale and give him somebody to move that position back over to IT.
So reduce the, uh, reduce the staffing level at the county clerk's office?
Take, yeah, take one and put it under Dale, cuz that's what we used to have.
Let me take a really deep breath here and say, that's a fight you guys can have. I can only imagine what a new elected official coming in, finding out he's losing one of his staff positions right after he fired two people is gonna be.
He used to have, or we used to have it over here anyway. And I just think it'd be a good idea to have it back here and get, cuz Dale's always running. He could use somebody. I don't know.
But if you're gonna do that, and I agree, there's value to that. I mean, there's real value to that. You need to get somebody that's really a computer person, not a clerk that just needs a place to go. You need somebody who actually knows computers.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I, I'm open to taking a look at it. I mean, I think some of the other discussions that have come up is someone that assists more of the commission and does more of the finance side, too. And, um, you know, I just, until Steve, until Steve comes up and talks to all three of us, I mean, I.
Before we're gonna do it, now's the time to do it, in budget time, not in the middle of the year, not after he gets that position filled.
I would hope that he would be up here the first of the year, talking to us about what he wants to do, cuz I haven't talked to him at all.
He said he wants to hire an accountant.
Oh, well, he hasn't told me that.
So that goes back to, so Steve must've talked to Jim LaPage. Cause Jim has pushed, as you know, Marvin, about every other year, he pushes him to take over all the finance side. And I'm guessing that Jim has gone to Steve and told him he needs to do it. Does that sound like a fair assumption?
Uh, yeah, I think there's a whole group of people that have told Steve that.
So, you know, I, I will say, by his history on this, um, it's at least three times I've been up here, the push has been made by Marvin. All three times, we've handled it the exact same way. You wanna, you wanna do the finance stuff, that's great. We're not adding any positions. We're not increasing your budget. And by the way, you're not taking any people out of our office. And, good luck. And every time, Marvin has let it drop.
I, I think that there is some value to someone in that office being involved in the process. I mean, the county clerk is the bookkeeper of the county. They need to have someone that's involved. Does it need to be an accountant or a CPA? No. Most of that function is a data entry function. It is the actual printing of the checks. It is not necessarily an accounting position. So I don't know. They definitely need to have someone involved in the process.
Checks and balances as far, and as far as the statute goes.
Right.
They're in charge of the processing, not anything.
Well, where were they whenever the surtax thing was going on? Cuz none of that was their fault.
Oh, wow.
They didn't have a thing to do with it.
Well, that also wasn't their bookkeeper or person either.
Back then, that's who's supposed to take care of figuring it out. And now they wanna say they're in charge of everything, but back then, nobody said, yeah, you know what? Could've been this officer that made a mistake. Okay, sorry to bring that back up. I won't say anything about that.
Well, just.
Till tomorrow.
My, my concerns there is that if we do do something like that, they're gonna have to work very well with Kristen and Debbie. And I can see a potential problem, because we have no control over that person, because that's the county clerk's personnel. And so, when there becomes tension or friction there, that, that creates a real problem. Because if that person doesn't work with Debbie, doesn't work with Kristen, you know, we're, we're left in the middle. So, I mean, I, I got some concerns there. I'm not saying that that would happen, but it could happen. I mean, you just never know what, what could happen here. I mean, just for instance, something happens, um, with Steve or whatever, and he has to resign, and the governor, who, we don't know who that's gonna be, gets to appoint a new clerk, you know, what happens then? So, you know, right? That's how all that works.
There's a vacancy, governor appoints a replacement.
I mean, so, you know, it.
Works the same way here, by the way.
It can all work, it can all work great, but some, something goes awry, and now there's a bunch of friction. You know, that, that becomes a huge. You know, that, that becomes a huge problem, so, I mean, it's just, that's just the way county government works, so.
I mean, I think.
I mean, it could happen with your office too, you know, I mean.
Oh yeah?
So.
I think, I mean, we would be very happy if they wanted to take a more active role in the processing of how they're gonna pay roll.
You know, I would suggest that Steve would do well to get up here now.
Yeah.
As opposed to waiting till January, cause we're gonna publish the budget the last 10 days, give or take.
Yeah.
Of December. You guys are gonna come back the beginning of January, confirm the fund balances, probably have your discussion about salaries and benefits. Because we, we historically have always done that after we confirm fund balance. Just, then we actually have a real knowledge of where we're at. And then vote the budget. I didn't give him a lot of time to get in and make a case for what he wants to do in his office.
I mean, then, you know, if he's wanting to hire two clerks, I'm really not apt to keep his salary budget the same. I'm apt to reduce it down to clerk.
Oh, I was gonna mention that too.
Yeah. I mean, we're not hiring clerks at $35,000 or whatever, the, the current ones that he's, he's told were no longer needed. We're gonna hire clerks at $25,000. And so, you know.
Generally, we go to the ba, we go to the base salary when a position opens up.
So, if he's gonna, if he wants to hire one person and instead of two, but, uh, you know, I don't know that I, I would do that if that was me. Because then you're gonna bring somebody in above your other people and that may not sit well.
I agree.
So.
Did the same thing to the treasurer's office whenever a new treasurer came in, so it's good for the goose, good for the game. Now, that being said, we gotta talk about Benny's pay too, don't we?
Not yet.
We just went through the treasurer's department.
No.
There wasn't a proposal in it, I didn't see one.
What he, did he just come up, talk about it that day or?
Well, I thought he was gonna.
Actually, he said for next year.
Well, and I thought he said he was gonna come back with something.
I thought he said, yeah. I would try for next year, why wait till 2016? Okay, go ahead. But yeah, we need to reduce that salary line for sure.
So what does that go to then?
I don't know, I'll have to go check, but I would assume, but we started the, I don't want to add, I'll make sure.
I just highlight it and let's, let's look at that later, but.
But I will say, I, I think there's real merit to putting somebody in there into the IT position. If you can, without adding a new position, if you can move a slot from one place to another and get an IT person, I think there's value to that. Because that's only gonna get more and more important. And we're behind the curve by not having a true IT department.
But that's why I think that position, the only reason we moved, uh, that position over there was because she's helping with payroll. And we needed to have somebody actually from the clerk's office, auditor's office, and our office working on it. And so that's why we moved that position over there. You know, that position didn't help a whole lot with IT stuff. I guess whenever it was hired, it wasn't developed around that. But now I think we have evolved into needing that position for that purpose specifically.
So is it more, I mean, is it more of an IT position or is it more of a finance position?
It was in the finance position, it was, uh, it was helping during payroll, you have to have that checks and balance in there when you're.
I understand that, but I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm having a hard time, I mean, is it somebody that's gonna be working on hardware and computer stuff? Cause that's, that's IT to me, and then software versus finance.
What I'm saying is, I think you need to get somebody who has an IT background in. I think you need to add, I wouldn't add a new position, I would try to find one somewhere that you can move. And his idea of pulling somebody from the clerk's office, I'm not advocating or dissent, it's an idea, it's a way to find a position. But I would get a, I think you need a more robust IT department. Dale's okay, is, is, he's good with the hardware. But we have nobody that's an employee that knows software at all. Dale knows a little tiny bit, I'm sure there's people in various offices that know a little tiny bit about their stuff. We don't have anybody who can make the software side really work. We're paying Rich Bizard, how much longer he'll want to keep doing it, who knows? And we need to think about getting somebody in-house that can do the actual software IT infrastructure.
And I did have a conversation with Dale, um, last week about this, and he was talking about, you know, bringing, since we put GIS with IT. He was talking about, uh, you know, bringing Melissa up on all of his stuff as far as backing up and, you know, and so he, and I don't know if I can say, but he's talking about, you know, maybe three to five years out, talking about retirement too. So he's thinking about that and how he wants that office to be able to sustain and not anybody have any problems, you know, after he's gone. So he was talking about maybe bringing her in, showing her the ropes. And if you're talking about a technical person to bring in under both of those two or something, to do the running around job, to setting up the, the NT servers type thing, to setting up the.
You got somebody just to put out fires while Dale can focus on what he's doing, and then he can also be training them to take his spot.
Yeah.
Maybe fill his spot when he leaves, so.
And I'm not gonna speak for him, and maybe we should have him come in here, but he thought with Melissa helping him and having Dale as a contract worker, that he could do, that that could still sustain. Because most of the software is all held by other vendors. You know, they're not really putting out any fires on software, they're just running around doing the hardware part of it. So if we can get him an intern here or something, he was thinking a full-time person he wouldn't need all the time, but you can talk to. That would be the best thing to do, is get his opinion on it. I would say, but I, I like the idea about bringing Melissa, you know, especially since AS400 is going away.
I agree.
And, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so do you agree to the 225 in publications and the 500 in education and training within the 120?
I don't think anybody had a problem with that small change.
Yeah.
Okay. 122.
County commission.
Well, we get, we just keep everything safe?
The electric services is his.
Oh, I'm.
Slush fund.
He has total control over that.
And then the neighborhood improvement district, we have four neighborhood improvement districts where the property owners pay back the county with the property taxes. For improvements, that one, and then they have one that will be done this year, so it'll be down to three.
And there are a couple others that are kind of being tossed around in the hopper out in the community. Whether they'll get done or not, nobody knows. Are you familiar with NIDs, Sam?
Hmm.
So NID is a process by which the landowners or residents, you can do it either by land or by voter, approve, um, a bond issue effectively to fix their road or their sewers or, I mean, there's all, any kind of public improvement in their area, and they tax themselves.
Sounds like a CID.
It's similar to CID, it's a little different, and it's actually general obligation debt of the county. Um, it's a unique, that's a unique provision in the constitution. But basically what it allows is, um, they sign a petition, they have to bring it to the commission, the commission has to agree with it. They have to propose a whole bunch of requirements they have to check off, including how they're gonna pay for it. And then it becomes a property tax. And they pay, they have two options, they can either pay their entire assessment upfront, or they can pay the property tax. Generally, what we have done is, it's been streets, I think they're all streets that we've done. We actually have done the street improvement. So we will upgrade their street from gravel to, to pavement, for example. And then they will pay for the cost of it. We'll pay it upfront, we'll issue a bond, we get repaid out of the bond, we're made whole, and then, and then they pay their assessments.
And you put the lien on the property, so it stays with the property.
Yep. So it's analogous to a CID, it's more restrictive, it's only for property improvement, uh, public improvement. You can't use it for your property, you can't use it for advertising, it's only for a public improvement. It's particularly good for neighborhood streets.
So that's, those two other ones under him, so I guess the next one would be.
County commission.
Yeah. And then I see no changes there unless you guys want to.
Want a bigger expense account.
Okay.
You guys have the biggest slush fund of all. It's called general revenue.
I'm just starting to sound like a clerk or an assessor or something.
You guys get to do what you want to. Yeah? That's why we ran it out elected, right?
General distribution is just an in and out of financial institution tax. We get taxed for a bunch of people, we're doing true to that count.
Domestic violence fund, that's a contract we do with RACs each year.
It's also an in and out.
I think they're the, I think they're the only entity that qualifies for it in the community.
Yes.
Recorder ODs, has Ralph said anything, you guys?
No, I, I've not talked to him much.
I just keep hearing it, he's, he wants a lot of new equipment.
Usually the only issue we have with recorder deed's office, um, is Larry is a genius at figuring out how to buy stuff for his office. When we continue to ratchet down his, like, office supply expense, and he ends up buying a new $3,000 copier. We kind of have a history and tradition, long-term, we can't do it with the collector, we do it with everybody else. If people start using their office supply account and buy computers or printers, then the next budget year, we reduce the account by the amount of what they spent on the computer or printer. Because computers, printer, the big stuff, we wanna run out of capital improvements so that we can do it on a countywide basis, as opposed to each department doing a hodgepodge.
You will notice his fees are down.
Larry's genius man, how he does it.
How come his fees are down?
Um, just refinancing in the housing market is kind of down, so you see his office kind of flow with that. So in a good housing year, his fees will go up, it'll be, well, it'll go down.
So.
And weddings are down, it's.
So you'll see in 2013, he was closer like 300,000 in fees, he's down to about 230.
So I had somebody talk to me about, uh, oh, the recorder's fees from a title company. And just throwing it out there, that they've said that somehow that this e-recording or e-filing or whatever could reduce the amount of fees that the title companies would be able to charge, so I'm just a little concerned about that, that, that we would not capture, be, not be able to capture the fee as well. And that could really be a.
If it reduces what the title companies get, that's one thing. You're, if you don't get your property deed recorded at the recorder's office and the fees paid, you don't have a valid deed. I mean.
Well, I mean, I.
Cause we're a race.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know how much validity is there.
It probably has a big impact on title companies. Cause they probably charge extra fees to do stuff.
Could be, so.
But we are a race state, as opposed to a notice state, I don't know if you ever heard that discussion. We're a race state, the first person who gets to the courthouse and records the deed controls. So for example, say I sell Chris my house, and I sign the deed and give it to him. And for whatever reason, he sticks it in the safety deposit box and forgets to record it. And then three years later, I sell my house to Jeff. Same house, same piece of property, sell it to Jeff, sign the deed and give it to him. He takes it to the recorder's office and files it. Chris goes, oh shoot, I forgot to file it, he runs in to file it, his deed's no good. Even though he had it three years before he did, it's whoever records it, that's the record. And that's why everybody's so uptight about making sure you get the deed, the recorder deed book stamp on your property. Because if you don't have that, you don't own your property. And whoever did own your property could sell it 10 more times.
I did not know that.
Notice states are different, notice states, basically, if I give him the deed, um, there's, there's presumed notice that he owns the property now. And if he gets a deed later and records it, he could come in with testimony and overturn that recording. He's out of, in Missouri, he's out of luck, he could sue me, but he ain't getting the property, cause he can't do anything to Jeff.
They still lose money back to the bank.
Yeah, but usually when that happens, there ain't no money left and.
The litigation long enough to.
Yeah. So that's why, that's why those fees, they're, while they rise and fall with the tide of refinancing, are always there. Because they're all, anytime you sell property, you're gonna get that thing stamped.
See, I see the title company maybe losing out on it if you see filing and stuff, but I don't, the recorder's fee's still gonna be there.
Yep.
I'm, I'm just concerned that the recorder wouldn't be able to charge some fees as well, so.
They are.
Yeah, you probably charge the same fee.
They're set by law, you can't.
Yeah.
Um, what title companies do, a lot of title companies will charge a closing fee. And they're be, they're getting really scrutinized on that because on a HUD, HUD one, HUD one form, you're supposed to break out the, the fees that you're paying that are coming out of it. And if you frame it right, you can get away with charging a closing fee that's more than the recording fees. But if you phrase it wrong, which most places phrase it wrong, it looks like you're, that charge is for recording. And a deed's like 42 bucks or 27 bucks to record, well, some of these people are charging $400. And people go, well, I thought I was paying that to get my deed recorded. No, you paid $27, get your deed recorded. They got three, they got $373 out of it in profit.
Well, something to keep in mind, I guess, if he's looking at more better.
And they are really uptight about that, title companies are.
Equipment.
No, I didn't know all that.
What I keep hearing.
Big chunk of money, big chunk of money for them.
His accounts that are like in and out, state fees that he collects and returns back over to the, that's during housing trust, children's trust fund.
Easter.
And recorder statute.
And, and you have to watch those like a hawk. Because it's, it would be far too easy for that account to get out of balance, and that money we have to pay.
Right.
Period.
And you did see a transfer just the other day, because, um, what money comes in has to go back out. And we try to keep those as tight as can be, so where there's no transferring going on into other line items.
Yep. Cause I know there have been op.
Yeah.
I, I know there have been attempts to transfer from like the housing trust fund into equipment services and stuff, whoa, you can't do that.
Okay, so I think we're done with that.
He does have a slush fund.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, recorder special.
Okay.
And again, I'll move that compared to what the cash balance is.
He's got 109,000 in there.
Hmm, let's see, what is his cash balance?
109 with his car's 400.
He spends most of it, I mean, he spends a pretty fair amount.
Yeah, he's.
It's a lot of that's done for, is that where he's doing his microfilming and digitization and?
He does some of that, and then he also has some salary, some.
Yeah, we have a, we have a deal with them on salaries.
Now, he has lost, that lady actually quit in March or April this year.
Oh, really?
So he has not filled that position, and unless I hear from Mr. Bray, we're not filling it with.
That's one more agreement.
I was gonna say, I won't, I won't sign the warrant to do that one again, I just, I'm done doing those. So we're kind of grandfathered in on the old.
So we made some gigantic mistakes in the past that we're still, still regretting. Um, and they all had to do with salaries. And they all had to do with elected officials that came in and said, look, I wanna pay so-and-so $3,000 more a year. And instead of saying no, um, in times past, we cut deals and said, if you'll pay for the extra $3,000, we're okay with it. And then we make them sign an agreement every year saying that they're gonna contribute the $3,000 to our fund, and then we'll adjust the salary. It's a huge mistake to have ever done that.
Now, I will have to say there was one full-time and one, um, that's the one that didn't come back. We also did have two other people in that office receiving some type of stipend or whatever you wanna call it. And I would assume that would continue, the one lady is leaving in April for retirement, so I was gonna prorate that, just since I know that. But it's up to you guys, whether you wanna do a memorandum of understanding for that short period of time, or if you wanna get rid of the holiday agreement. I'll have to know that when we talk about budget. And going back to the county clerk, they also had that arrangement, so I need to know if you don't wanna do that memorandum of understanding anymore.
Now, the one exception that we've been pretty good about, and I think is a good idea, is if somebody wants to hire an entire new position.
Right.
Um, I think at one time, the prosecutor paid for.
At one time?
A, a whole prosecutor.
And the recorder did too.
And the recorder did too?
Yes.
And we said, if you'll pay for the position, we'll provide for it. We thought that was fair.
Right.
Doing these single salary adjustments, they're invariably favoritism issues. I mean, I don't mean it with any disrespect to anybody, but.
And it is going on in the prosecutor's office, those would be the three departments I would still need to know.
What's the agreement with the clerk?
It was all four of them, um.
They got $800 pay raise or something like that.
Ain't no one.
Yeah, I'd say take it out and, uh, readjust, I mean, keep the salary line the same.
Or reduce it to the clerk level or whatever. And so we hear from Steve.
I mean, they all got $800 raise.
It's been going on for, for you.
I mean, I would just, so we eliminated two of the. I mean, I would just, so we eliminated two of the positions. So that's 1,600. So there's a $1,600 difference basically. So we'll absorb the 1,600 in salaries. We're going to get rid of the agreement. And then we'll see what Steve wants to go forward. I mean, that would be my opinion.
And then drop the salary down to this entry level.
On the new, on the new positions or unless he comes to us otherwise with what he wants to do. So.
Okay. I just want you guys to be aware that there had other ones that had that agreement.
Yeah, let's just get rid of any of those that we can.
Prosecutor, recorder, and prosecutor.
Okay. So that's recorder, GIS.
GIS.
Alyssa gave us a handout.
She did want to increase her equipment, equipment service contract. And she gave you a list of that by $100. So she wanted to go to 4,200. If I got that note, yes.
Eighty-two hundred.
What did I say? Forty-two?
And she gave us a list of what those were. You should have the, I don't care if that or not.
It's attached.
I'm fine with that. She is, she does a fantastic job. Really good.
And I was pleased to hear that Dale and her were working, you know, and that would be good for the county.
General accounts.
Revenue for her selling those discs or anything?
I wouldn't bet on getting a lot of revenue out of that.
I'd just wait and see. If we have it, then that's a.
Well, let's skip over 127. Is that what's next in the book? Cause that's kind of the tie-up, finish-up of the whole general fund, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay.
We'll go on to 128, which is the IS department. Again, the revenue, you know where that comes from. And Dale, oh, I don't think he really had any concern.
Oh, there was a big change for internet.
Yes. And we knew that.
And we knew that was coming. Cause we upgraded and added. But I think long-term, that's just a cost to do in business. You have to have high-speed internet. We went from 10 meg to 100 meg, right?
Yeah.
We were having problems, we were having problems being able to push data back and forth between some of our departments because there's just not enough bandwidth.
Are we still going to get together and look at all these equipment service contracts?
I think you should.
Yeah, we can. We can go out there and look at his now if you want. His is a big one too.
Well, I mean, I think it's worth, I mean, equipment service contracts, in my opinion, are like playing the lottery. I mean, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. Okay? So, I mean, so.
A lot of his are software-related more than they are equipment-related.
More than other departments.
Right, right. So he pays a lot of maintenance to software companies that we get all of the.
Where's that at? That list of?
Annually.
No, the list of service contracts he has.
His are a little different than some. I mean, I think there is still some equipment, but a lot of his are actually software-related.
That has a list of all the?
So Image Trend, Intrinsic Core, Death Net, InVision.
Okay, I got it.
Real Vision, New World.
We had our maintenance costs at the tab.
And then he has a lot of licensing agreements. So like our email licensing and our software licensing for Microsoft and things like that are in there.
There's not too much hardware, so to say, in that. And all these up in the yellow, that's basically our phone system at the very top, you know. The extra two down there, those are strictly for the sheriff. So we have sent those to the sheriff's maintenance group at 1,96500.
I think the only real hardware one we have in there is the AS400. Which we're trying to get, yeah, we're trying to get rid of, obviously when we go to Windows. But because of the nature of an AS400, we did look at that one a couple of years ago. We decided it was probably valuable to keep the maintenance on it because.
And the tape drive backup too. Do you have maintenance on those? And it's basically to be able to have one here within two hours of us needing it.
And once we get rid of the AS400, that's all gone.
Right. And New World should go away. And our new software is not quite that.
And I'm, I'm, we are actually debating whether we're going, that starts, that ends March 31st. New World does, the current contract, the new contract, instead of us going ahead and paying it and getting reimbursed, maybe just taking our chances for a couple of months. I don't know. How you feel about that?
It'll be about a two-month overlap of the time when we actually get off of New World and go on to BSNA. So we're, we're talking about not renewing our agreement with New World for those couple of months.
Look at me.
Again, it is like the lottery.
Yes.
We, we hope that we don't have any issues, but.
I'm just, I have the feeling that they would probably now prorate that for a couple of months. And I'm not willing to spend that kind of money for a couple of months. I'd rather take our chances. And then if we had to rely on BSNA to get us going faster, I think we could, you know, if something major would happen. Maybe. Their timeframe is very tight too, it sounds like.
I think we just ought to look at every one of them. I mean, really, I mean, you know, whether it's 1,900 bucks for the paging software, annual maintenance agreement. I mean, I, I don't know what that is.
It's part of the telephone. So when the sheriff's department, up in the prosecutor's office, they've added an option to the telephone where they can overhead page in their office.
Through their speakers.
Through their speakers in their phone.
And so there again, I mean, you know, if we're buying good quality stuff, do we need a maintenance agreement?
But if you have to call Central Link and get their people up here to fix it, they're going to charge you $160 an hour.
And that's the, that's the roulette wheel. That's the roulette wheel.
Yeah. And so you got, it costs you one hour. That, you know, it depends how, what happens.
I mean, so.
Thank you.
I mean, we got phones all over the place and we can't page through the phones.
Hell, finish it off, don't, you know, there.
I apologize. I forgot.
You would have had it, it's bad. This way I understood it.
Sure, sure.
My point being is that, you know, it seems like we have all this stuff going on. And I mean, yeah, some of those things are great features. And you know what? But we can't afford everything in the candy store. And so.
I think with the phone system, it's a little more of, it's not really Dale's necessarily expertise to try and fix it. So he likes the safety net of someone from Centravision.
I do too.
Yeah. I mean, well, and our phone being attached to the internet and everything now.
And I'm okay with, you know, if we have a phone system, but.
And I will have to tell you, of all the people I've ever met here in the county, Dale is the most conservative person I've ever met. He really is. I mean, to some, to some to his downfall unfortunately.
Get me a new chair in the budget, please. I hate this chair. Damn near break my ankle. Sure it's a chair.
Automatically goes down.
Yeah, you hit that button on there, don't you?
Yeah, cause I kick my feet up.
Oh, I was just thinking you're eating more.
Yeah.
He can say that to you. He better not say that to you.
Well, if your chair starts collapsing under my staff, and I haven't seen that happen to you guys, so don't worry about it.
You better not.
Put the exercising in the budget, will you?
Have you ever seen the Mayhem commercials y'all stay?
Yeah, I love those.
I'm snow. And much like you, as winter goes on, I get heavier.
Lands out on that car in the garage.
I'll change that if I can. Can I change that to one, two? Who's that one? No, Holly, it'll be all right. Some of those won't happen.
I, I would agree with Chris. You should always be looking at these equipment service contracts, these software maintenance ones. They drive me crazy. I cannot stand them. I haven't yet figured out a way to get around them. You know, we pretty much, not completely, but pretty much have gotten away from the hardware maintenance on printers and copiers and stuff like that, which. Which were just nickel and dime us to death. And we should seriously think about in the future if we're going to get copiers, not leasing them. And not doing a s- equipment service contract, we should just buy it and be done.
Okay.
Okay.
One, 131, or I'm sorry.
Building maintenance.
Sorry, no numbers. Again, no revenue there, but his expense, let's see, he talked about reorganization or we talked about that for him. But we'll go there later. As far as, he would like the courthouse for materials and supplies to go back up to 11,000 instead of the 10.
I'm fine with what he asked for. I mean, it was 11,000 there and 11.5 on juvenile. That was it.
Okay, you're okay with it?
Yeah, it's a minimal, minimal adjustment. If he doesn't use it, he doesn't use it.
And he reports directly to us. It's not like an elected official.
And let's see, those were the only ones. Besides his long list of capital, but.
Well, and you guys are going to have to talk about reorganization in that department and how you're going to go forward with it.
Definitely.
You may need to break that out into maintenance and janitorial.
Yes, I mean.
I, I would, I think there may be some value in looking at those as separate salary lines. I know you do. You guys are really hesitant to put in multiple salary lines, but you've got, you need to have maintenance people who can fix stuff. And you probably need to separately have janitors who can clean stuff. And right now, it's just all one, which means.
Well, and you could do that with titles or.
Yeah, that's true. Get an org chart and do it.
We did the same thing with Public Works. You know, they've got equipment operators and they got maintenance. We can do.
As a result, we're kind of, need doing neither of them perfectly well. Because the maintenance guys are constantly being pulled away to clean stuff up.
And move stuff.
And then they get, then they get pulled away from cleaning to go fix stuff. And as a result, you kind of never get, you know, the roach stays in the hallway for two weeks. Because every time they get to that point in the hallway, somebody says, hey, I need you to fix this.
And with that reorganization, there may be, with what we're doing right now is bringing on a part-timer, that may be part of the solution for next year too, with part-timers for the.
What are his equipment service contracts?
His is the elevators.
That's it?
Other than the law enforcement. So we charge the law enforcement for their own.
He has one big contract with Otis or whoever the bid is with to do all of the elevators and stuff for the sheriff's department.
Because they're all different named elevators. So they have to.
Schindler, Notice.
Yeah, they have to do something special. They have to work on each other.
County planning?
Planning already.
There isn't any changes.
So, what's that, 173?
I guess that's a good thing that zoning didn't pass. We don't have to mess with that. Cause that would have changed a lot.
A lot.
And you receive the professional services and there goes away because of that contract with Smith.
Okay. Why do I have a blank page? This page intentionally left blank.
Intentionally left blank.
You know, you could have just put health and welfare on the other side and saved a piece of paper times 60 bucks.
And you know what I would have had to do? Re-number every page after that.
That's just work for you. We could have saved, we could have saved like 60 pieces of paper.
So is there something in there that's supposed to be something in there for health and welfare or?
It's coming.
Yeah, it's after that. It's just that we gained or lost pages before that. So to, instead of re-numbing every.
Thanks, Chelsea.
You're welcome.
She'll take care. Yeah, Sam, you'll find that out. Don't count on me. These girls up here.
All right. So where are we at? Public administrator?
Public administrator. I don't think Marilyn had any substantive.
Extra part-time money.
Is that her thing?
Yeah. So she wanted to go from 13 to 16 or whatever you would.
Oh, yeah, 16016. I don't even remember what she said. I may not have been here.
She has two of her 14 hours a week and one of her 13.
She has one that can only work 1,000 hours because it was Connie and she retired. So she wanted to bring on an additional person to work the same amount as Connie so that.
And we did change her full-time last year based on.
We did? Looks like it's about the same.
Well.
It's all $6,000 difference.
I just know that she has not been at that level with her part-time. The first year she was only at 12.5. This year I'm only annualized down to like 10 at the most. So that's why I stuck with the 13. But if she thinks she's going to use one.
I forget. I don't even, I didn't put in notes in there. I remember she came up here. What her caseload is.
Marilyn's good people. She plays pretty straight with us. She's never, she's never tried to pull a wool over our eyes. You know that, but she's so good at it, we've never noticed it, but.
You see a lot of people come in and out of that.
She has over 250 people she takes care of.
She does a good job.
She's their mother, their banker, their.
I don't know. I mean.
I would be fine with putting the 16 back in.
She's only at 7,700 right now.
Like I said, she's always been good to deal with. And she doesn't spend out. And plus it's personnel and it's part-time. She wouldn't spend out everything.
I'd say just put it in there. I'm fine with it. If she uses it or if she needs it, she can.
She's been good to work with. I mean, I will, I will say that.
She does a lot of stuff by herself. I think she actually should probably use a lot more if she.
She did. Two days after she buried Leonard, she was back at work.
My only concern is that, you know, we need to take care of the people that we got. We don't need to be hiring any more people. Or, you know, we need to do what we can to stay within the personnel that we have.
She's not running again in 2016, so.
Well, I guess my biggest concern, she's only at seven right now. Even if she doubled that, she would still be at 14.
Instead of giving her the whole 16.
I mean, I understand what she's asking for, but even if you had two people work the same amount as the one.
Well, and there's always holidays and weeks. There's always, you know, something going on that people don't actually get that, that amount of hours. I mean, you gonna leave it at 13 or you, you three, you tell me, I'll take two, whatever two I get. And anyway, take care of our. Our employees.
I mean, I, yeah, maybe give her 14 and, I mean, I just, I don't, I mean, it doesn't look like she's going to get to 10,000 this year, so.
We'll even get to eight. She's only got one.
Doubling the seven, would you, I mean, double it.
Oh, she'll get to eight, sorry. Eight too.
Leave it at 13. You can always adjust it too.
Yep. What's 18 times 12? 12, $20,000. I'm just looking at, I'm taking the biggest month she had and just taking it if that would be the worst.
Well, or we could take the smallest month, maybe.
Then you can take zero times 12.
Or we could just average it, what we've done by, by 11.
Okay. We divide it and then it comes up to 11.
When I look at that, the average is less than a thousand dollars a month.
704 dollars.
12,000 ought to be more than enough, but she's got 13.
84, four.
Yeah. Even earlier when she, when I annualized, I was only at nine. So I thought 13 would.
Go on with that argument. Leaving it at 13 would make more sense. I guess if she's really needing it, she can come and ask for a budget adjustment.
Well, we put it in there and the next thing she knows, you're, she's paying them a dollar an hour more or $2 an hour more and she uses it up. So, I mean, that's.
That's a good point.
Yep.
That's a good point.
And she can do that because she's got it in her budget. So she pays people more than what she is now. So.
I think that's a good point.
All of a sudden you get a, get a part-time person that's making as much as a full-time person on an hourly rate. So.
Which they don't get benefits. So it's still a win-win. But I'm, I'm fine with, what was it last year? Is that what you're saying, go to last year's?
Leave it the same.
I was just, yeah, I mean, she was, amended budget last year was 13 for part-time.
So 13 is what you?
Yeah.
Okay. Those are valid arguments. That's a good point. So if she ends up needing more, she can come ask us. If she runs into some difficult times or something, it, it happens.
Okay. I'm fine with that. County Health Department?
Health Department, 12, I don't.
I think she's been good to work with.
On her revenue side for general public health, but we still not sure what that is. She should have something in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
And it's likely to go up, not down.
Really?
Since he released all of that.
Oh, yeah, that's right. He released the money.
Million, but we don't know what our share of the million will still have.
And I don't know if I heard her right on immunization, the health department refrigerator review actual cost totals. I don't know, did she have a refrigerator included in that or was I dreaming?
She said with VaxCare, she probably has a little extra in there. Her refrigerator that she buys, it's not like a commercial refrigerator. So she said she would have enough in there if she needed to replace one.
Okay. So it's not anything I need to back. Okay, so it's not anything I need to back gather there.
And did you take school help out or?
Well, I had a question mark. Is that the one with Juvenile?
Yep.
It was only two hundred and fifty dollars and that's the.
Where we at, Debbie?
I'm sorry, five-nine-seven-seven-one. Oh, five-nine-five-five-seven. That was the amount that she had spent at Juvenile, which is only a small amount, but there was a full-time person there too that did other work, so.
This line mainly paid for mileage for Sydney to go back and forth.
So while we're here, of course, did we adjust the WIC admin cost?
Oh, yeah, that's the other one. The reason that got reduced is they have a line item called WIC Medicaid.
Yep.
Five-three-seven-six-eight, which is a new line and it has to be spent on WIC.
Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Okay.
So, and it carries forward. So that line jumped quite a bit. We're at like twenty thousand dollars in there.
Right.
They have to spend on WIC things. So I actually reduced their WIC admin costs down because they have that additional twenty in there. That they get to spend on the same names. But they've spent seven so far this year, so it might need to go up a little.
So they got seven there and it looks like they've spent thirteen-three on the WIC Medicaid side, so.
Right.
So they got twenty and five. I mean, is Christie aware of that? That, is she putting the right stuff in the right place or?
I think she, and she actually is the one that initially talked about bringing it down to the five, but I think they've had a few more expenses in the last couple of months, so. I don't know if she's just more comfortable with the ten, because they need it, but we want to call that line item and see where they're at today.
And we do take the phone cost out of there and mileage for the WIC people.
I think before we talked, they hadn't been to their conference yet, which is those big two months in there.
So it looks to me like on the WIC Medicaid, why can't we bring that down to fifteen thousand?
It actually coincides with the revenue side.
So it has to balance.
Right, so it has to balance out. So they have twenty thousand, right?
WIC Medicaid's in and out.
Right, and they get to carry forward anything they don't spend. So if they have money left over this year that they did not spend out of that revenue.
They just have it for next year.
Yeah, they have to put it in that line to have it to spend.
And there is a long list of carry forward different accounts throughout the whole GR budget that'll have to be checked.
So I'm not telling you it looks like WIC admin costs to the grant. Is that what you're talking about?
No, on the revenue side, there's a WIC Medicaid also.
It's in the top. It's right here.
So this twenty thousand has to be on the expense side also. So they've spent almost, or they've got almost nineteen this year.
Okay.
If they don't spend that whole nineteen, they get the difference carried forward on the expense side also.
Okay. So what are we gonna do on the admin costs? Leave it at five or?
It's really up to you guys. I know they've spent almost eight, so I think five might be a little low, but.
So put ten?
Or eight.
I mean, they will get that carried forward, so if they've only spent thirteen and they brought in nineteen, they'll have an extra five.
I'm okay with putting it at eight. Eight thousand, yeah. And then what was she okay with on mileage into? Two fifty. I just had something by it.
Oh, that's.
That's the nurse. That's the nurse we were talking about.
Okay.
That's paying mileage for her nurse to go over to Juvenile if they're not gonna provide that service.
So let's, let's dive into that because. So they had talked about not having their nurse do juvenile stuff because she's not really qualified to do that kind of stuff.
Right.
So are we gonna look at reducing, is that a half time?
It's a full-time position over there and she does do other work, as I had mentioned to Christie while she was here, so she was.
I think right now she was only doing like six hours a week at Juvenile.
So she would find her other clinic work to do to keep her busy.
So we're gonna have to add a nurse onto the juvenile side.
Well, I know.
We'll have to discuss that.
Yeah, Michael's come up with asking about, you know, we told him to look into the contract with the sheriff's department. He did. But if they went there, it'd be a lot higher. He's supposed to be writing this all up for you guys.
Okay.
Because then they would take directions from that doctor and not from the doctor that he's already has lined up for the juvenile center.
So he knows like thirty-eight, I think, is what he said it would be.
Thirty-eight thousand.
If he contracted with them.
Yeah.
He did talk to Kirksville, which is the closest facility that's similar in size to his and does the same thing. They actually have a part-time nurse that they have on staff.
Employed by the county, yeah.
So it is an employee. I actually, well, we both talked to Christie and said, is there some other company within the town that can provide that service? And she says that the community health center might be something to look at and contracting with them to provide that service because they have nurses on staff already that deal with those issues. So we told Michael to try and see if that was a possibility even.
What's the possibility of reaching out to other juvenile centers that are required to do the same thing and have a nurse that goes from one to the other?
And that's kind of with the contract that the sheriff has. That's what their company does. They kind of go from one place to another and they keep their nurses or doctors busy, but.
And I'm not sure how many.
Thirty-eight thousand seems like a lot. I mean, what do we require?
Well, there you're paying for the nurse and the doctor, so that's why the increase in cost. You're not just paying for the nurse. If they provide the nurse, their nurse has to take orders from their doctor. So you're paying for both is the reason.
For how many hours a week?
He said he had to have twenty an hour. I'm not sure how he's doing it now, but.
What are they gonna do in those twenty hours?
Cause you get a nurse practitioner.
What's his contract say?
To get licensed. To get licensed. He said he has to have twenty hours.
To get licensed for what?
For a center, for.
Yeah, the accreditation or whatever.
Through whom?
I don't know, the state, yeah.
So does he have to be licensed? Or is this like, is this like one of those, we're the best center accreditations?
I think to keep the residential kids, he has to meet some higher requirements.
And to be reimbursed from the state for those services, so I can.
Have him check into that and get with this.
Yeah, show us exactly where it says.
I mean, I just.
I don't wanna spend all day on this. We don't have any answers up here. We should get Michael up here and talk to him about it some more.
I mean, I don't really have a problem. I think some weeks they may spend more than twenty hours there, but I, twenty hours a week, I'm thinking, what are they gonna do?
I agree with you.
I mean, they're gonna be sitting around twiddling their thumbs.
Well, and if they're in school most of the day.
During the summer, it would be different theoretically, but even then.
I mean, twenty hours a week, you have all evening, every evening with a nurse.
Can we, can we step back real quick on building maintenance? You don't need to pull it up, but the lights on the courthouse that burned up? Do we need to go ahead and move forward getting those fixed?
He was talking with me yesterday and I said, don't explain it three different times and then have to come up here. Do we open on the agenda and he can explain it? He, he had a price from X, Y, Z.
I saw sixty-two hundred.
Sixty-two.
We're gonna have to bid it, but I think we should get the lights fixed, don't you? I mean, we had a fire out there. We'd probably have to fix it.
Well, we need to have lights on the flag.
I agree.
Amounts too, so.
That's important.
While we're doing it, we should get it fixed. I'm fine with bidding it. There's some kind of wiring deal that it's, once it gets to the lights, it's not getting the total amperage or, I don't know all that, but.
So, so you know, the two options are, we can declare an emergency and just get it fixed, or we can go out to bid and it'll be sixty days. What do you wanna do?
I just say get it bid.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
I don't know, not having light on a flag bothers me. I mean, that's a, you gotta take it, if that flag's flying without a light on at night, it needs to be taken down.
Well, we could always piggyback on the electrical part with the city or with whoever has a contract with one. If they have that.
We can piggyback with state and have, is it Meyer? I think Meyer's on state contract, so we could get it done tomorrow.
I think we should get done tomorrow. I don't like the fact the flag flies without a light on it. That, that, that's a issue for me.
What's, so I talked to Greg a little bit about too, what's the, what's the requirement of a flag to be lit? Just there's a light that shines up?
It has to be the light on the flag. But basically, you just shine a light up the flagpole and that's a light on the flag.
You could put, you could put one on the building and have a floodlight on it. That's what you're asking, right?
Right, well, I'm just saying, if a light shines up and it shines this way and the flag's blowing this way.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
So my thought was, is we got three huge lights out there that shine up on this flag and, I mean, it's a huge waste of electricity. And we should be looking at some type of low voltage LED lights or something. And I don't know if they would work, but.
I didn't really answer that question.
We got, we got all, all kinds of outside lights that are gonna have to be replaced again when we start doing all the sidewalks and everything else too.
The other thing you could do is just pull those lights out and put LEDs in. There're plenty, there're plenty of LED lighting now that's super bright.
Oh, yeah.
And way less electricity.
I don't have a problem with declaring an emergency, but let's, let's get a couple bids and see what they're gonna cost.
Have them do phone bids and see what the options are. Can you talk to Greg and just tell him to get two or three options on phone bids and bring them back and we'll just vote to do something?
All right.
Cause I, I think LED lighting would be smart anyway. I'd much rather do that than those big old halogen lights that burn electricity like.
Update it and put LEDs in there. It's gonna, it's a ton less energy on there.
I agree. That's a good idea. You okay with that, Sam?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need three lights shining on it? Get rid of two of it, have one light?
I mean, I kinda like the three, I like the three light thing because when the flag is blowing, it's lit no matter what direction.
I like it being lit up around the courthouse anyhow.
And I think that's a small cost to give some respect to our country.
Losing all that light that's just shining right up in the air though. I mean, really.
He's either listening to us, he's either listening to us or something, cause I just got, we just all got an email saying, I'm looking at LED for outside plus rebates.
I just replied to his email too.
It's one of the two. He's either watching it or.
Get to work, Greg.
Okay.
All right.
General public welfare.
Do we wanna wait on this one or do we wanna go there?
This one's a little more complicated than most. We've had additional.
General public welfare, I mean, there's a stat and I can't recall what number, oh, you've got it in here. Sixty-three, sixty-seven, three oh three.
And then there's two oh five.
And then the two oh, that's the one. Two oh five is the one that kinda says we have to spend some things on general welfare. This has been kind of a moving target. Since I've been up here, we've always done the first one, two, we've done the first.
Three.
Three, and the historical society, and soil and water conservation. Those have always been done. As far as I know, they've always, always been done. I mean, I don't ever recall.
Salute to America's been there.
Salute to America's been there now for a number of years. Civil War Project was a one-timer. That's why it's all zeros now.
And we added Crime Stoppers and Habitat.
In two thousand and three, I think.
Where did we do the downtown?
It's down below. We didn't, we didn't really have those in our budget lines.
We actually made those out of miscellaneous in one twenty-seven last year. We weren't sure. At the time the budget was passed, we weren't sure that we were giving them the money. And it wasn't really approved till later.
So there's, so there's two or three others.
And there's the other ones that were added.
Oh, there you go. Downtown, Central Missouri Foster Care and CBB, which was the hot bike tour, which, by the way, I thought was wildly successful, didn't you?
I did too, yeah. We came down, it was.
That was unbelievable how many people were here for that.
So, so I'll go first here. So in general, I can't say that any one of these organizations is not worthy of funding. But that being said, I have a real issue with taking county tax dollars and divvying it out to other organizations. Because I think you can see that in all forms of government. Everybody's got their pet peeves, everybody's got their certain organizations. And who do you give that money to and where does this stop? Where does it end? Does it keep growing? And then also, I'd like to just say that I think Downtown, Thursday Night Live, Hot Bike Tour, and Salute to America need to come out of this category. And need to go into economic development.
And I don't have a problem with that from that perspective, because I think those are probably more economic development than they are general welfare.
And, and an idea that I.
Same for crime stoppers. I don't think, crime stalkers ought to go into law enforcement.
Kind of an idea that I kind of had was maybe creating a sub-account in economic development where you set aside a certain dollar amount every year. And these places come and kind of submit an application to you and you guys decide which ones you want to give to each year. That it's not earmarked for anyone until they come and.
Do they come before us and ask for, did they come before us and ask for?
We make them write letters and, and we made, and anybody who's new has had to do a presentation. And anybody who, any commissioner, any commissioner has any question about, has to come and make a presentation. And we've had.
Last year, they all made a presentation.
I mean, I.
Was it two years? Two. I don't know that last year everybody came up, but I think two, two years ago, I think we had everybody come up.
I just think it's gotta stop somewhere. And I mean, I'm not, you know, I can't, I can't pick any one of these and say that they're not worthy of us funding them. But at what level? And do we set a certain amount in general welfare and that's all we give out? Or, you know, where, where does it, where does it stop?
Well, as a wise college professor once told me, where do you draw the line? You just, that's what these three seats entail, is you draw the line. And if you draw the line, you say, we're gonna put a hundred thousand, I'm just making a number, a hundred thousand dollars in and that's it. And you allocate out your hundred thousand dollars and somebody comes in and says, you look at this great project and two of the three go, that's a great project? It's now a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Right.
I mean, in the end, because we control this, the commission controls it, you can kinda set the line anywhere you want. I don't like the fact that general public welfare lists out these various contract entities. I tend to agree it ought to be a general number. We gotta zero all those out and it ought to be hypothetically, it ought to be fifty-five thousand dollars for general public welfare. And then how we allocate it would be up to us. By putting this number in the budget every year, we're basically saying, we're committing that much to each one of these no matter what.
And we usually do and usually sign a letter when we do approve the budget to those entities, so.
We generally, we make them request it in advance.
Yes.
So anybody who doesn't request doesn't get in the budget. They're just out.
Anyone that's in here that has money and has that day request.
And any of those requests that we have questions about, we'll make them come, either come in, either amplify their request or come in and explain it, like Carla Stuck's Art in the Park thing.
That got lost out last year because she didn't request it.
She didn't request it. The first few years she requested it and we really made her explain what it was. Now, this is City Cat, honey, Art Council.
That's her.
That's her.
All of that ones.
So she submits stuff and.
Yeah, she did.
We have periodically sent it back and said, now you gotta explain. And with her, for example, we require her to show that she did the project before we give her the money.
Last year.
Cause that happened one year.
Or this year's flowers.
We gave her money and we weren't convinced that the project was done, so.
Then the year before that was the truck.
Yeah, I thought the truck was really cool.
She's done the Art in the Park thing a couple of years and.
There's a whole bunch more on Mon Edgewood here.
I, you know, I'm not the arty person, so I don't have as much appreciation for it, so.
So I would agree and I would recommend that you guys put Downtown, Salute, and the CBB money into econo, as a line in economic development.
Did we do the art scroll too, Debbie?
Where we got the economic development?
This is the first year they've.
General.
That's the thing.
General.
Okay, so then we need to take this whole.
I'm surprised we haven't had more requests.
Thing in here about chapter sixty-seven, you know, with the services of economic development nature out of this whole thing. I don't like the title of general health and welfare. I don't think that title is actually fitting of what this is.
Some of them, yes. Some of them have always been, and they are.
I just don't like the title, period.
So here's economic development.
That's, that's why it's in the statute.
In that, I'm fine with moving it to there too. It's no different than my own budget. I've got forty-two thousand people that ask me to sponsor their ball teams, to buy a ham, to, you know. Every day we're getting something in the mail, Cancer Society.
I would say that, I would say Homemaker, Able, Senior Nutrition, Habitat for Humanity. Those are truly general health and welfare.
Soil conservation.
That's like agriculture, but we have to do that one. I don't know why it's in this group, but I would say those.
It'd be considered health.
Those first four. Those first four are clearly Health and Welfare. Everything else.
But the statute does not clarify at what level.
No, it doesn't.
Do you have to fund any one of those?
It does not. That's, this is just historic.
Right. And so, and so to go back to Jeff's point, you're right. I get hit up to sponsor organizations all the time. And so, and that's, and that's kinda where I got to this point, is that I can't sponsor everyone, Sam can't sponsor everyone.
You know.
You can't sponsor everyone. There's just no way. So, that's, that's what I'm kinda getting at, is we're kinda picking winners and losers here. And so, and of course, when I sponsor it, that's my money. When we're sponsoring them, these people, that's the county taxpayers' dollar.
And, and there's gotta be a legitimate reason for why we're doing it. And, you know, I think that's why we have made them come and demonstrate what they do.
Well, some of this, like Art Stroll and Thursday Night Live, I don't know where the CID's gonna go now. You know, Mark Maymert was doing a lot of that with Stephanie and he's, he's gone. So, if, if they would create a CID downtown, this would go away, cause this is all figured into the, the budget of the CID, so.
Well, you know, I, we, we, we did it last year. I thought it was very successful. We got a request for it again this year. But I agree with Chris, it's Economic Development.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it's not Health and Welfare. And, and neither is Crime Stoppers, or the Historical Society, or Art in a Park, or Salute to America. None of those are Health and Welfare either. They're all Economic Development purposes of some type or another.
Really, is the Historical Society Health and Welfare?
No.
And I don't know how that got started, but it is the Cole County Historic Society. It's basically our museum, and I think that's the reason we have always supported it. I don't know when that started.
I could go back to when we first started, but it, it wasn't, the museum itself was never like our building. We had anything to do with it.
No.
It was just a donation for.
Yeah, I mean, it's the county museum. That's, I mean, it's not our museum, it's just the county museum.
I'm thinking it's been here almost as long as I have.
Karen Platter in Russellville talked about they'd like to have a skateboard park. Would that fall under something like this, or would that?
I would say a skateboard park would fall under parks.
Parks.
Which we actually have a budget item for. We've always been very hesitant on funding capital improvements in communities. Because there's a really big community that would love to have a new park or four, and I'm not sure we wanna pay for.
But when you open this door to Thursday Night Live, Hot Bike Tour.
Yeah.
We have a Frogleg Festival. Every other community has different things, so you're asking.
And if they're bringing, and you know, the, the theory behind it is, the reason they're Economic Development is they bring in people from out of town. Out of the county.
How many? How many you gotta bring in? We got Montez.
I don't know. You get, you get fifty thousand people that come in for Salute to America. You know?
Yeah, from all over.
Thursday Night Live draw, you know, generates thousands of people from outside of town. I mean, those, those, the Hot Bike Tour, good lord, you talk about people coming in from all over. I don't, I've been to the Frogleg Festival lots of times. Aside from some people maybe driving up from Enin and Olean, I'm not sure how many.
I can guarantee you half those people are from Montez.
There's quite a few people that come in for those small steam engines and everything, so, yeah.
So, there is merit to looking at those options, but that's why I think you should put Economic Development. We're spending.
Right.
Currently, the Economic Development line has a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in it.
True.
You could add, you know, twenty-five or thirty thousand to it. I don't know what the number comes out. I think it's twenty-two, five is what it would be if we move those three over.
We don't have to decide today.
Or you could leave it the same and allocate out of it, but, I, you know.
We'll have to decide today, but I think we should come up with some type of a cap. And maybe take some of these out of here that we don't consider Health and Welfare. And we divvy that up, and when it's gone, it's gone. And so.
What's your cap?
Well, I mean.
If you back out the, back out the ones we said to back out.
Okay, so it's City Art Council, Salute.
Five, ten, twenty.
I think Historical Society really doesn't need to be in there.
Twenty-nine, that takes out twenty-nine thousand. Is that right?
Which ones we taking out?
You're still leaving Crime Stoppers, right?
No, you take out Crime Stoppers. Crime Stoppers oughta be out of Law Enforcement Fund. I'm not ever sure why that came out of.
So, what else did, what other five did you take out?
So, the only ones I left, all I left in were the first four.
Okay.
We'd like to leave in the soil and.
Oh, yeah, you wanted to keep soil?
And then I would like to think the foster care would go into that too, if you all are.
Foster care.
The one that we started this year.
We gave this year to the foster care.
Adoption.
Oh, that's right, I remember that. No, that's a Health and Welfare one I would just.
Where's it at?
It's actually on the bottom. We didn't separate it out, but we did give them five thousand this year.
Seeing that one should be in here.
Yep.
So.
But I would take out these line items for the individual groups and put that as just a General Health and Welfare total of ten, twenty, thirty-one. You said five is what we did to the foster care?
Yes.
So, that's ten, twenty, thirty, one, plus five, thirty-six thousand dollars.
I got forty.
Oh, yeah, plus soil. So, forty-one thousand.
I got forty-three.
How'd you get that?
Did you add in the twenty-five hundred for Bike Tour?
No, that goes Economic Development.
Well, that's what I'm adding, the Economic Development people.
That's what we're gonna take out of there?
We were, so I think this, General Public Welfare oughta include the foster care. It oughta include the first four on the list, and it oughta include Soil and Water Conservation.
Yes.
And that comes out to forty-one thousand dollars by my count.
Okay, so you're leaving Soil Conservation in this one?
Yeah, I don't know where else it goes. Do you?
Thousand, yeah, I don't know.
Crime Stoppers oughta go out of Law Enforcement.
So, I'm looking at seventy-five hundred, thirty-five hundred, ten and ten. Oh, it's thirty-five, okay, that's eleven, I got.
Yeah, I did that too. So, forty-one, so forty-one stays in this, just called General Welfare.
Well.
I don't like.
Can we leave the lines in there if you're gonna currently give to the same people? Because historically, all of the information in there is broken out. So, if you're going to continue to do the same ones, there's no reason to combine them together.
That's your guys' call.
You can't put those under Economic Development?
Uh, the other ones, if you want to move out of this fund, yes, we can, we can change it. But if you're going to leave these in General Public Welfare, there's already separate lines, and you're going to continue to give to the same ones. There's no reason to combine them into one amount because you have this, the history of it. Right now, you can see what you've given each one every year because they're in there separately. So, if you're gonna continue to give to the same ones, I don't wanna combine them together because you have the history there in separate lines. You're gonna continue to give to those separate lines.
I guess I'm not following you.
And maybe we can have them map that within the new system, maybe?
We could, um, not combine them together.
The old system doesn't work if she wants.
And maybe, maybe.
You can't just cut and paste. You can't just take this.
Take this, this account number, put it in another place.
No, you can't, you can't combine it together. Once it's out there, it's out there, and you can't get rid of it, and you can't, you can't combine it into something.
So, you set up your new system in which case you can.
Right, so, we can, we can talk about combining those in the new system. But currently, to approve the budget, if you're going to continue to give to the same people, I would prefer to leave them in the separate lines.
That's fine. Can you just put it in, in a form or something, or put it on a sheet or whatever? And just maybe a heading above it that'll just say Economic Development and have those categories listed down below? I mean, could you move them around just a little bit?
Well, if you wanna pull the rest of them out, we're talking about the ones that are staying. So, the first one, Soil Conservation, if you're leaving them in this fund, I wanna leave them separate. If you wanna pull the others out and move them somewhere else, we can do that. If you want to pull, one twenty-seven, we, we can do that and combine them together in a lump sum. I'm saying the ones you're leaving in here and continuing to pay out of here, I would like to leave them separate.
And then once we get the new system, then you can.
Well, we can.
Swap them over and it'll be under the.
Right, it's the one at that time, put them together.
So, right now, with the other ones being in, and plus the additional new one, you've got about forty-three thousand five hundred in Economic Development. If you wanna fund them the same, and if you wanna add the Art Stroll for two thousand. And I'm assuming the Bike Tour, he never really said how much. I'm assuming the same.
I don't think that's coming here again.
No.
Now, they've got a Mustang, they've got Shelby.
Hot Rod.
And that's gonna be a bigger amount.
And it's gonna be a heck of a bigger event too.
Yeah.
Well, he never specified.
Cause it's a different, I think it's a different group.
Um, it's still Commissioned Visitor Recovery Committee, and he did not include an amount. He sent a letter asking if we would continue to support, but he did not put in a dollar amount in there.
Is that the Shelby Fest?
I think so.
The Shelby Fest is coming up. They were in Herman.
No, no, this isn't the Shelby Fest.
No, this is hot, it's, it's the Hot Rod Tour.
Yeah. We brought in Hot Bike this year, and next year we're bringing in Hot Rod.
But there is a Shelby Fest.
Shelby Fest is gonna be, yeah, I think at the mall first and then downtown. And they outcrew Herman.
So, we're at forty-one thousand for General Welfare. I'd like to knock it back to forty thousand dollars, give them forty thousand dollars, and we'll split it up accordingly.
In General Welfare?
Yeah. That's a thousand dollars, you know.
One, two, three, four.
I mean, we had, we had one person add last year.
Six.
You know?
We put five thousand extra in last year, so it's still a net increase over what we've done historically if we go to forty. It's four thousand dollars more than we've done historically in the past.
I mean, that's knocking two people back another five hundred bucks or something.
Six of them, that we'd have to take that extra thousand off.
Somehow you'd have to allocate that six thousand off of.
Six thousand.
Six.
No, he's saying on from forty, one to forty.
Right.
Right, it's a total of a thousand dollars, so we, we knocked two, we knocked maybe five, and I'm just hypothetically, we knocked Foster Care down to four thousand, and the, and the five that we gave them last year. Still getting some funds, you know, that they didn't get before, but.
I'd just assume leave it at forty-one, it's forty-one and.
Sam, what do you think?
I'd leave it at forty-one.
If, I mean, we're gonna have somebody next year come back and say, hey, can we get.
I think that's fine, leave it, leave it at forty-one, and, and, you know, I think that's a good, it's a discussion to have every year. It's a discussion to have every year.
If we have somebody else come back next year and say they want five thousand.
Well, but.
Then we gotta divvy it up to forty-one, or do we go up to forty-six?
You know what I would suggest is, just, I love putting people on the spot. Sorry to do that to people, but I think it has value. If somebody comes in next year and says, "We want it at four thousand dollars in General Welfare," tell them, "That's great. You tell us who we're supposed to reduce." And make them go on record saying, "Well, you should reduce Senior Nutrition Center," or you should. And if they say, "Well, we don't think you should do something, we just wanna add it," then you can come back and say, "Well, we'll throw it in a hopper, but we don't intend to add money at this point." And then you solve the problem.
Or do we put a magic number in there as fifty thousand's the budget, and we got nine thousand to work with in the coming years? And then once you hit that fifty, you're done.
So, see this stack of paper? See this stack of paper? That's what will come in in the next two days after you approve the budget with fifty thousand dollars.
See, I, I think a lot of it's really gonna be Economic Development more than.
So, while we're on this topic.
General Welfare.
Do you wanna talk about it at the line item, Economic Development, in one twenty-seven?
We're not in one twenty-seven right now. So, we're, we're gonna do forty-one in General Public Welfare.
Yes.
How are we doing on Pauper Funeral? Are we gonna be okay with that number? That's one we do pay for, and that one.
Why did we, actual, and thirteen was twenty-seven fifty?
It's just a guess. We never know what we're gonna be.
I know we had a request here lately, so I know there's gonna be another two hundred and fifty come out of there, I'm sure.
Okay. So, we're not, at this point, we're not gonna hit it. So, I would keep it twenty-five hundred, cause we don't pay unless it happens. We had, there was a year where we had several of them come in at a big slug at one point, like three or four came in suddenly.
Maryland does a very good job of trying to find other resources for these people to help with their loved ones or with someone nobody knows, you know, who the family is.
I mean, I'm just gonna say that as far as General Health and Welfare go, I mean, forty-one thousand's my top cap, you know? Somebody, if we wanna divvy up the pie differently, that's fine, but, you know, that's what you guys wanna do, that's fine, but I'm not going above forty-one thousand now or ever, so.
Well, I mean, it's not my favorite thing, but these are, oh, Habitat I know from experience. I've never been to a Senior Nutrition Center. I've read some stuff in newspaper. Able Learning Center, I don't know much about them either. They've come in, made presentations. Same with Homemaker Services. Those, these are drops in the bucket. I don't have near a problem with the forty-one. And we take them on a case by case basis.
Did we figure it was thirty-four, five going the other way?
No, forty-three, five.
What am I missing? I got ten for Salute, I got ten for Salute.
Yes.
Five for Art.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven for Historical Society, ten for Thursday Night Live, and twenty-five hundred for Hot Bike. Is that right? Did I miss something?
I went ahead and put that Art Stroll in there for two.
Oh, Art Stroll? So, thirty-six, five?
Yeah. I think I made a mistake. I took that ten out of Civil War.
Thirty-six, five. And I just put a note on here, on my book, just, that's something we have to discuss when we get back to General Accounts. How you guys wanna handle that?
And what I'd say.
What's that? I wasn't paying attention, I guess.
How you wanna handle it? I mean, do we, do we put it in Economic Development as an add? Do we just, that's for future discussion. So, I just put a note there to make sure when we get to General Accounts.
My understanding, cause yesterday we were on the radio, but the Downtown Jefferson City, I think they're cutting back a couple Thursday Night Lives. And maybe an Art Stroll or two.
Oh, well, that would change our equation.
Yeah, so I.
Yeah, I think it goes into a lump pool of ED, and we, we can divvy it out as, as people come and ask for it.
Well, and it's.
Cause they're working on a calendar for next year.
That's why I put it in here to say, I mean, I mean, do you wanna just add thirty-six, five to Economic Development and let it ride? Cause you guys control, General Council's great, cause the county, the commission controls it.
Well, right, now in Economic Development, it's the one fifty-one to the Chamber, so do you wanna add to it, or do you wanna take that from?
My, my suggestion would be, at this point, this is only my suggestion, I would add it, cause you don't have to spend it.
Yeah.
If you don't add it, and then you decided a later date you want to, it's a bigger pain butt to go through.
Page twelve, fifty-four.
Yes. That would be my.
I, I don't have a problem with that in thirty-six, five, and I mean, I don't really care if we take ED up to two hundred thousand.
I think it'd be a good idea.
That doesn't, that doesn't mean that we're spending that with the Chamber or anybody else, but it's just two hundred thousand we're spending on Economic Development, and we can decide where that money goes.
And I think, and I will tell you as an aside, I think that will pay off long-term for you guys to do that. I think that's a good investment.
So.
You good with that?
Ten to thirty-six, five.
We're just making it two hundred even, and then you guys have control.
Maybe that'd mean we're gonna spend two hundred, it just.
You may spend, you may spend fifty.
How deep do you wanna get into this Economic Development thing right now? Do we have forty-five minutes?
So, so let me go back to what I was saying. My suggestion is, and I like the two hundred, put it at two hundred, pass the budget with it at two hundred. And then come back and figure out how, what you're gonna do with particular contractors they're in.
And you do have to approve a contract for each one of those.
And, and I will also say that, and I've been fairly candid about this, you guys probably, all three have already heard it, but if you're gonna change your, your make, your primary Economic Development contract, you need to have something ready to go at the point you decide to do that. Because I don't think what the county wants to be in is a position where we say.
It goes bad.
Alright, we're not using our primary Economic Development number. What are we gonna do this year? Hmm, you know? Or we're gonna go take RFPs and see what other options there are. We're gonna hire a consultant, God forbid, to tell us what other options there are. I mean, if you, if you say you're gonna walk away from the big contract, the county needs to be involved in Economic Development. The Chamber is just one vehicle. But before you decide to drive that vehicle over the cliff, you probably oughta have another one to get into.
What if that vehicle took a running leap and jumped off the cliff?
That would be different.
Not saying they did, but I'm just saying.
I got, I got a distinct impression that they don't view that they're taking a running leap and jumping off the cliff, so I have a feeling that you're gonna have to push it off the cliff if you wanna go there.
Well, and something to remember also is, again, that statute does not set a dollar amount for Economic Development. So, our contracts have changed over time in amount that we give, so there's not a set dollar amount that you have to set aside for Economic Development either.
I don't disagree with you in theory on that, and then the dollar amount, we can pick our own Economic Development projects to try to drive Economic Development.
Absolutely. Just unlimited options.
So. We can drive our own.
You, you have to play, you have to play in that.
You have to be in a game. We gotta be in a game.
Yeah, we don't wanna do like the city did either. They had their own little kingdom and didn't let anybody in. We, we wanna be a player with everybody too.
And what kingdom were they in that they're not playing in?
Well, I think they built a fort.
Your analogy there.
You listed.
Okay. I think so.
So.
That's why the bad feelings among the city and the county.
They have in the past, they have in the past advocated for the fort mentality. They have in the past, they have in the past advocated for the fort mentality. I don't disagree with that, which is it's only good if it happens inside Jeff's city period.
Right.
And the natural bounce back from the fort mentality from the commission historically was, well, then we are only gonna deal with outside the city.
That's right.
Which was bad for everybody.
Yeah.
And we've, we no longer, I think we've torn down the fort walls. I'm not sure you wanna go back to the fort walls.
Right, right.
Absolutely not.
I'm fairly sure you don't want to.
I see what you're saying now. I didn't know you.
We all need to get along together and work together to, I mean, and if we don't work together, then economic development, we're just pissing our money away.
Right, exactly.
And it works both ways. You got the some of them out in the county are saying, uh-uh, we don't wanna be part of city. Leave us from out of this.
Yeah.
And that's not the wrong mentality because I think they both depend on each other.
So, so I'm not, you know, I just threw out the two hundred thousand. It's just a place mark. I mean, we're not committing to it.
Put it in there for now. We don't have to spend it here. Exactly right.
I think it's a great number to put in there because you're saying, look. We're gonna have an open discussion about economic development, but the one thing we're talking about is, you know, we're in, we're publicly saying in our budget, we're increasing what we wanna do in economic development because it's important. It doesn't mean you have to spend it. We're saying we're increasing it. I think you'll be very happy with that.
Okay, so the next one after that, I got one fifty-one.
Yeah, we're putting it in there and then we'll talk about what's actually gonna happen later on.
Later on.
So, because that's gonna be a pretty long discussion.
As you get contracts, as you get.
I agree.
I think that's the way to do it. Okay. Well, that was easy. Forty-five minutes, really? That only took five minutes, Jeff. God.
We haven't talked about where that money's.
Uh, that's not part of the budget discussion.
No.
I think some black tie events.
Circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk.
Alrighty. Okay. She would like her part-time being put back in there. I know we just, I know how you guys feel. We started that program for one year, so we're gonna ask you.
I'm fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Yes.
That, that's my opinion is I'll take it out every year and you guys can determine if you want to continue.
Where's the interpreter thing going?
If you wanna add the five hundred, I prefer you add it to that civil fee and cost. Instead of adding a lot.
Should we add it part-time?
Can we pass that on to?
So you, but you got civil fee and cost at five hundred bucks.
Right, so she would want an additional five hundred.
So she wants it at a thousand?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
And then the other thing was she wanted her office supplies back to back up.
No, I'm not good with that.
She wanted a civil fee and cost of three thousand.
She wants office supplies. She comes and asks us for them in capital.
She doesn't want office supplies. She made it very clear. She wants to have enough money in there that she can buy equipment when she feels like it. Which is capital.
Just that three thousand that you see.
I agree with you.
We were in some discussion about an equipment service contract on copies. She wanted to move it down. It's still an equipment service contract, so it went into equipment service contract. That's why you see the big drop there, but there's an increase above.
All right. Gotcha.
Okay.
Court services?
Court services.
Where was the, was the microfilming gonna be in capital?
I pulled it out. You guys get to decide whether it's capital or not.
It was requested to be in capital.
You're concerned about, to me, it was a long-term investment in more than a five year. It could go into capital. Mark, I think you had a concern about that.
I was just confused because I thought we were doing microfilming all along.
I did too.
No, we kinda stopped when Brenda was here because it was not clear to us what she was doing, where we were going. There was no.
When Dawn kept coming to us about microfilming, we, we didn't approve it or? Dawn, oh, yeah.
I don't remember that all. Okay.
We were, we were moving her files around from place to place and we were moving it out to Shepherd's.
How's she getting rid of all these files and stuff? I mean, is she just doing it in-house or is she scanning stuff or?
That's what the part-timer, they're scanning as they go on the current ones. And like she said, she still has a lot to come out and add.
So they're scanning stuff. They're not microfilming. That's what this.
Scanning stuff that's been microfilmed already.
No, she's scanning new stuff and that's what the part timer.
Well, and they're going back to them.
Well, how can they get rid of it if it's not microfilmed?
They're going to start scanning forward.
Statute said it has to be microfilmed.
After twenty-five years, it has to be microfilmed.
Well, how can they get rid of it?
So she can hold a stand item for twenty-five years as scanned.
So she's scanning it and she holds the document.
Once she hits that twenty-five year mark, she has to either microfilm or print a paper copy.
Or, or that's twenty-three years from now, so you don't have to worry about it because.
Exactly.
They'll change something by then.
I guarantee you in twenty-five years, there will not be microfilming anymore.
They shouldn't be microfilming now.
I agree.
How does she even pull that stuff up? Does she have to go to an actual microfilm thing and pull it up?
Yes, yes.
It's a roll.
Oh my gosh. So she's gotta have an index to do that.
Yep.
They're filed by case number, by, so by year by case number.
But so she pulls a case number and she has to go and find a microfilm that and she pulls it up.
Yep. I've done, I've gotten in there and done it before.
If you go in that main office up there on the third floor, if you look to the right, it used to be the machine right there.
And then if there's a new. Is it film or fish? It might be fish is what she's actually using.
Yeah.
It's the pages.
Yeah, that's fish. Yeah. Yeah, it's not film anymore. It's fish, but same difference.
I can understand her frustration having to do all that every time she's gotta pull something, but good grief. And then what's she do? How does she get it, how does she get it to the judge?
Well, they actually have a printer on their microfilm machine, so if you're coming in and asking for a document, you can print it off as your.
So she takes paper, she microfilms it, and then she, she has to pull it. She's gotta print it back out and then give, oh my gosh.
Then they reopen the case and they gotta microfilm it again.
It depends. Most of the time, if they're reopening a case, they have to print the judgment only, not the whole thing. If someone's coming in and asking for copies, then you have to print everything.
It's the reason that going digital would be so much smarter. You know, they don't open case files now in new cases because it's all done digital electronically. It's, it's.
Believe me, I've been fighting this fight since.
You know, what we ought to do is we ought to box up all those boxes. We're gonna deliver them to the Supreme Court. And tell them because of your operating rule, you have to microfilm all these. And just leave them in their lobby. Because they won't destroy their own court files because then they will have destroyed public records, which they can't do. And we can say, hey, they're court files. Your problem.
I'd pay to, I'd pay to hire temp help to deliver it to them. And I just stick them in there one box at a time.
Okay.
And take the state prisoners over to the Capitol.
There you go.
I just thought what we ought to do is take them all to Fulton and handcuff them to the front gate at Fulton. Say, okay, there you go. There's your prisoners.
There you go. You can have the prisoners carrying a box.
All right.
Well, yeah, shiny object.
John Ryan.
He just wanted to add five hundred dollars to meeting travel dues. That was the only thing he had.
The only reason this one kind of bothers me is we sent two court reporters to California.
California.
I know.
And said, oh, it was a one-time deal. You heard him say that.
And we sent a judge to, I think, France.
What? No, 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 no.
We did not pay the whole thing, but he can submit what the state does not cover.
What judge went to France? For what?
It's a court conference.
Foreign exchange judge?
I go overseas quite a bit.
We did not pay that much of it.
I do it for co, I do it for some conferences. I pay for it myself.
So that is the reason there for the.
So I'd say there's no need to increase it.
I agree.
So the jury script, what is that?
Yeah.
We pay jurors eighteen dollars a day or whatever it is.
Their food, their meals, their transportation.
And then where does, where does, does that include the food that he brings in for jury script?
Yes. So that's actually their daily rate plus all of their.
So we keep meeting travel at six then?
This year it included the parking and the trolley.
Right.
Wild and that kind of stuff.
And we talked about subbing that out.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for reducing that too. I mean, I don't mind paying the jurors. I mean, it's cheap. But, I mean, John, John seems to be extravagant on some of his stuff that he.
So we did talk about taking that jury script line and leaving the main line as just paying the jurors fees and then creating a sub account somewhere in there for his.
You should do that. You should do that. I highly recommend you do that.
So.
So there we get to, what do you want to put in?
Well, how much did we spend in jury script? An actual jury script?
I have a spreadsheet upstairs living up to it, but I have.
Why don't we skip this and come back?
Yeah.
Since you can get us that update.
And then are we not, are we not gonna get this drug court enhancement grant?
Um, we did get it. It just was after I submitted the budget. You guys just did a court order or extending.
Now, I will say, you guys are gonna need to have a discussion about how you get juror, where you park jurors. We've had, we had a fairly significant incident happen on the street with one of the jurors walking up the hill. That parking down that bottom of that hill, because the jury pool tends to be older. I, I don't know why. I guess because everybody who's younger finds an excuse. I guess the court lets everybody out. But the jurors tend to be older. They tend to be less healthy. And coming up that hill, starting to create a problem.
What do we pay for that lot when we're down there?
We don't actually pay for.
We don't pay for.
We don't pay for that lot to use it.
That's why we're down at five of the hill. The city.
They allow, they allow us to use it.
Okay.
Um, it used to not be all the way at five.
We pay for other lots, but we don't pay for that one.
It used to be on the hill.
Yeah.
And it's now moved us back further.
It's still, you have to.
The problem there is just the fact of trying to schedule, like even if you parked them down there, and the trolley idea necessarily wasn't a bad idea. But it's the scheduling of trying to figure out when to pick them up, when to drop them off. When are they supposed to shuttle? Because there's no idea how long they're going to be here and when they get released to go back to their cars.
We need to find a tram and let Riley do that.
You know, one option, one option honestly would be to buy an extended passenger van, a used passenger van and have Riley or somebody like that to go down and pick up. Because you know, if I park down there, I'd rather walk. But if it's snowy or icy, that hills, that.
Or raining.
Yeah, I'm correct, Ryan. I can wear an umbrella. But if it's snowy or icy, that hillside's dangerous.
Well, it's steep too.
It is. And it's steep and, you know, like I said, we had a guy who ended up in the hospital and I don't know if we'll get sued or not, but.
Well, I'm thinking, doesn't juvenile have an extended passenger van?
We got one right across the street from us.
They do not. They have two mini vans.
It's got cages in it.
Yeah.
I don't think we want our jurors going in cages.
They'd feel more secure.
We could pull them in the Sallyport. Bring them in the back way.
You know, that's not a bad idea. They don't have to get outside anywhere. They can just pull right in there. They can take them in through the elevator so nobody sees you.
It's just something I'm telling you guys, you just need to, you need to start thinking about it.
Well, with some of the future stuff we're looking at though.
We may have parking available.
We might have, yeah.
Or more parking available.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's gonna cost us.
We have a lot of parking on side. Okay.
One fifty-five, court security?
Court security. I think Donnie had one, had a salary adjustment he wanted.
Yeah, he had some salary in there. He was talking about the shackling, but was he okay with the amount that was in there or he wanted more?
I didn't have any noted changes.
I didn't have any noted. I can't remember.
He wanted two thousand dollars for Holly.
Right. That was it.
We're gonna talk about that later or?
It's up to you guys how you wanna handle that.
We can put all the salary stuff, talk about it all at once if we wanna do that.
Okay.
Because we didn't talk about, well, nevermind. We did kinda talk about treasurer's office.
But they didn't, he didn't bring us anything. You don't get nothing, you don't get nothing.
That's what I mean.
Child support. I don't recall any changes on this one.
Um, she had a couple. I think publications was the big one. She wanted another twelve hundred. She wanted it to be twelve hundred or she wanted it at twelve hundred.
How much?
She wanted it twelve hundred.
We're not spending that much on it. Why would we increase it?
Well, and that's what Christian's thought process is too. I mean, we know all of hers gets reimbursed up to a certain amount, but once she doesn't spend it, it makes it look like we do bad budgeting. Through when the auditors come in and do their audit review of us. And that's some line items that is the problem.
What?
You can explain what the, we keepers hope out.
Some, some line items, they're asking, why, why are you budgeting so much and not spending it? Or the same difference. I mean, if we go way over in a line item, they're asking, because there are.
Well, I understand the way over. I understand that. Way over makes sense to me. Under, that's good fiscal stewardship. Why wouldn't we do that?
In some cases, but if you're doing it the same line item every year, it starts to be, why aren't you doing a better job of budgeting?
Okay, so leave publications at a thousand and make investigations twenty-nine hundred. I, you know, that's.
I didn't hear her saying that investigation.
Two hun, two hundred dollars and we're gonna get criticized over two hundred dollars?
If you look at her budget, we budget like thirty thousand dollars in a year when she spends quite a bit, she's spending nineteen. You're talking about a ten thousand doll, I mean, that's a third of her budget that she's not spending every year.
But look at, but look at the ones that are not being spent out.
I know.
You know, those are the ones we should be adjusting. We can spend.
Yeah, like printing and binding. Knock it back to five hundred bucks, so.
Or a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And meeting travels and dues, sixty-seven dollars?
Oh, we got twenty-five hundred.
That one, her, I think her training is like the end of November, first part of December.
Oh, okay. She just hasn't come in.
It just hasn't hit yet.
So are you saying she's basically gonna spend nineteen thousand out of her thirty-four thousand budget?
Well, no, because you just heard that there's a couple thousand dollars that are gonna go into meeting, travel and dues.
Okay, I'm true. Well, yeah, we didn't add that. Twenty-five.
How many?
Now, what's she spent historically? Twenty-five, 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 twenty-five?
About the rate. The, the difference between her budget and most of them is everything she spends, she gets back from the state. So if she does have a year where she spends more money, she does get reimbursed for it, so.
So in twenty thirteen, she spent nine hundred dollars on office supplies. And we budgeted six thousand dollars for office supplies and she's spending it. How you spend nine hundred dollars in a year and office supplies now go to four thousand?
Her, yeah, I don't know. And sometimes her categories are different than ours. It could be that she paid something, I don't know, somewhere else last year.
I would suggest leave it like it is right now, as far as what Kristen, the auditor has come up with unless you wanna increase the.
I'm good with that.
Professional services.
The other thing was she had seven thousand in office equipment.
She wants computers.
That's capital.
Yeah, but that comes out of the state, so we don't put that one into capital.
The one that has to stay in her budget.
Because if it goes to, if it goes to capital, we can't get reimbursed for it.
So is it a, what, whose asset is it?
It's ours.
It's still the county's asset. But if we do it out of capital improvements, we can't be reimbursed.
So we put seven thousand in there. Will we put seven thousand then on the income side?
Yeah, we'll balance.
Yeah, it'll balance. So her total amount at the bottom of the expense side will be her revenue line.
I'm fine with that.
I'm good with Christian's recommendations and I'd leave professional services at two thousand.
I agree.
And just add seven.
Oh, excuse me.
Juvenile?
Juvenile.
What'd he ask for?
Um, so the nurse, which we kind of talked about a little bit, was his big thing and then wants to add a thousand to equipment service contract and a thousand to vehicle and equipment operation. But I wanna take a look at equipment service contract because some of those are yearly contracts that he does a big.
And we asked him to get us a list of ones.
And that's also where that copier is.
Where's, what copiers? Now the equipment services?
Equipment service contract.
Yeah, three hundred.
Forty-one.
Forty-three dollars a month. Copier.
It comes down to spending like four hundred dollars a year.
Why?
For leasing a copier.
Why? Why don't you just buy one?
I'm not sure when we got into that.
Can we get out of it?
He's been leasing a cop, a copier for many years.
Can we get out of it?
All the way to two thousand and eight.
Can we get out of it?
I don't know. I have not looked at the contract.
I, I, I don't think it's binding. I mean, we can't encumber. I don't know who's signing it, but.
I've never signed it.
So, I mean, I just.
I'd get out of it and go buy a copier. Talk to Jen about it.
There's, there are four different companies that have state bid or corporate. There's, there are four different companies that have state bid or corporate agreements that are funded.
So, um, a lot of that's security too in that equipment services contract.
Steady is the other bit.
Yeah, so I'm for canceling that as well, but that's just me.
Well, we'll, let's get to that one meeting that we're having on security, I'm, I'm all for it too, as long as we can cancel it.
But, I mean, I guess we probably really need something else in place before we.
Well, yeah, and his is a lot of like fobbing in and out so the kids can't get in certain areas.
Well, we're gonna figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, just keep in mind, I don't think his is one you can just cancel.
No, not as easy as the rest of the others.
Um, so vehicle equipment operation, he needs an extra thousand for.
He has spent, well, annual license sixty-one hundred, uh, he did have seven last year, I cut it back because I don't know.
He does have an extra vehicle now, now that he took over that one at the sheriff's department, you know, and he promised us when one of his other ones go out, he's gonna keep three, but he does have four right now.
So what, what's all in vehicle equipment operation?
It's his gas.
Fuel.
Changes, batteries, tires.
Are they still claiming like the three miles, the mileage each trip up there instead?
Some people are.
Some people are.
But that's up in mileage.
I know, I was, I'm just, what I was wondering is, why don't they just hop in the car or drive up there and we don't have to mess with that three mile expense?
Whenever they have an additional vehicle, you would think that sometimes they could use that, but.
Well, I'm thinking they're not driving any of them enough and so we got batteries going dead and tires going flat and everything else, so.
Dry rotting and stuff.
Until, until he can show me how many miles he's putting on those vehicles, I'm not for increasing that at all.
And I did get the mileage count on the vehicles yesterday from the sheriff.
Yeah, I had Debbie try to get all the hours and mileage on every vehicle that we got, just to look at it on a yearly basis, but anyway, so.
And the only other one he went in was the one we talked about yesterday, the Oscar drug court grant where he said there was no personnel, but there is, those trackers come out of there. I think we mean it is.
Okay, anything else on juvenile?
Can we get one of those, get rid of one of those cars? I mean, because those cars are pretty old, there's no sense having two of them sitting around if you don't.
I think the vans are the ones, he has like minivans and then he has a Crown Vic, I think.
Got a brand new minivan.
Three original, well, those are the three original and then they just just added them power.
Oh, he got a brand new minivan here. He had, he had a wreck, he had a wreck and they totaled one and he got a brand new minivan.
It was last year. It was last year.
Well, he got a new one, I was gonna say, if we can get rid of one, you don't have to have insurance on it, you don't have to worry about it sitting on the lot.
So he still has an older minivan and a Crown Vic.
Probably not gonna get anything for it, but it's kinda like my old, that old Dodge I have, it's like it's sitting around not doing anything, if I can get a little something for it. I'm not ever paying insurance or.
Sure.
Title work or anything, so.
Keep it running. So what were we doing with the Oscar drug court grant, were we taking it to twenty-five or leaving it at fifteen?
He wanted it at twenty-five, I reduced it to fifteen because ten of that pays for those trackers and they're in the salary line already.
So you need to wanna leave it at fifteen?
Yes.
And then are we adding the ten back in somewhere else or is that just in salaries?
No, it's already in there, we've already budgeted it in salaries.
Okay.
He just wants it in for him to spend.
Yeah, he wants to spend it also.
Good.
Corner, corner is what it is.
Um, that one, I know we're gonna be over in autopsies this year, but it's kind of a.
It is what it is, there's just no way to.
Yeah, so I try to leave it at twenty-four if we go over.
But don't yell at me when I have to hand you a transfer.
I've never yelled at you about corner autopsies.
I hear, that's not very good budgeting if you didn't know.
I never said that, who said that?
Not me?
Not me?
I'm gonna say that next time you hand me that transfer.
Thirty-seven five already.
Debbie, why didn't you get that right?
Prosecutor's office, I would say a year for his, I don't know what he asked for.
One additional prosecuting attorney.
And again, we talked about the salary supplements that are going on, um, so we'll address that then too. That, again, there was a full-time position that he did pay for one time and he decided not to fund it, so.
So.
Adding FTEs.
How do we, I mean, hypothetically, say we give him a part-time or another full-time position and we put that money in his salary line, what's to keep him from giving everybody a big raise with that?
Technically, technically, nothing if he wants to go to court. Practically, we just refuse to sign the sheets and tell him to go to court and sue us. Which nobody will do, even Estes wouldn't do that, he sued us on something else, he would not do it, nobody will sue us over that because it'll. Particularly considering his budget request was for an additional prosecutor, publicly said, on the record, everything.
I've talked to him since then, I think he's.
And, and we, we have historically, as long as I've been up here, I've always told him, if you need another prosecuting attorney because your case lets up, we'll get you one, that's one we're okay with. And then there were several years where he said, I don't want an additional person, I just wanna give everybody big raises, and we said, no, no, you're not listening to what we're saying. If you need another prosecuting attorney, we'll pay for one.
And up until last year, he did pay for a part-time attorney, he did pay for a part-time.
It was part-time, yeah.
That's all he really asked for, wasn't it?
Yep, that was it.
If we put a full-timer in there, we're gonna be able to reduce the part-time then?
No, he's not using that for an attorney at all, he's using it for an investigator.
He has a part-time investigator and a part-time office for.
And a lot of summer help that goes in and out.
You wanna put that in with the rest of the salaries and stuff or the rest of all it wants?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, he also has three slash.
One of which has a lot of cash in it.
Once new, PA administration costs, it's a fee on restitution, it's brand new, it doesn't last a lot of money, PA delinquent tax, he gets a half of the money that he collects for a fee on collecting delinquent taxes from the state of Jersey.
Does he typically spend any of that on?
He spends it on random things, part of it is the salary supplement.
Salary supplement.
I think he paid some of it for drug testing.
Yeah, he does.
Not, not his employees, but evidence drug testing.
Right, and he can do some witness costs, things like that, um, the PA bad check fee, the fee on bad check seeking.
That, that's a fund that will eventually disappear.
Yes.
Eventually, because there just won't be checks at some point in time.
And that one he does spend quite a bit on regular office expenses.
Well, the banks do a good job now of collecting out bad checks, so that's, I used to be taking checks over upstairs quite often and now the bank is very diligent.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
In doing that and, uh, I think I've taken even one check in probably the last three years.
That's good, that's good.
The other fund here is the training fund, part of it's prosecutor, part of it's the sheriff, it's a fee charged on or paid by them, that they get to spend on training costs.
So they decide the prosecutor gets his portion and the sheriff gets his portion?
It's a, it's a dollar now, one's like two dollars per case, the other one is, um, the sheriff gets like a post-commission training, which they pay directly out the same amount that they get in, so it's like a one-time fee for here. And then their fee is a different dollar. The sheriff in here is just our transfer. To our. And it is the same amount.
Emergency management.
I do reduce off the capital, um, the computer services and I'll continue to do that unless you guys say any different.
So it was two million forty and so you've taken the admin fee out of it or what?
Computer services, that's it.
Okay.
Because there was a debate about him not wanting to pay that for, just as well as the admin.
He does ask here that he not pay the computer services cost.
He wants to hire his own computer person for the amount of money that we're taking out. But.
I don't know, it's something we wouldn't necessarily look at.
Well, the problem is that he's tied to our email system, he's tied to our network, you know, so it's kinda hard to separate that out and have Dale and then.
No, maybe Dale could give us a percentage breakdown and we could give him twenty thousand dollars back and he could hire and we could keep the other thirty thousand dollars for what we have to do and he'll find out it's not such a good deal, I don't know.
We come up with that from that indirect cost that is.
It was up a point before, what if you added the person to IS then the sheriff's probably paying for half of it?
It's an idea. It's an idea.
But reducing this then?
Uh, well, giving him his full amount, but he would transfer back a half of that person's salary.
He'd do it.
I think we'd still be in a hole because this is figured based on the storage space, based on everything else that we currently have, we could look at it, we haven't done that indirect costing now for two years, so. We will do it if this coming here.
Just something to think about.
I know, it'd just be nice to see that two million forty with the, the fees taken out, but I realize that's not in the book, but.
Oh, I know, well, I mean, we could separate, you know, I don't know, I can't.
Of course, I've talked to you about that, you know, it's, it's hard to figure out where stuff's bouncing all over the place, so.
Excuse me, sorry. Drill down into.
Emergency management.
Bill wanted. It was that sixteen eighty, six hundred and eighty of which he thought went to, how did he have that explained to us?
Well, Hazmat, he would like.
He would have fifteen hundred.
Yeah, and he said that was the Camden County agreement, but we don't have that yet, there is no agreement.
No, the fifteen hundred was just what he wanted, it would be an additional five if you added in the Camden County.
Oh.
Because I was explaining why I went to the twelve five, because I put that Camden County in there, then I checked out because we don't have an agreement with them. But he asked for an additional fifteen hundred just for his items and hazmat response.
Yeah, I'd like to leave the Camden County in there, um, but you were at six with the Camden County?
Without.
No, without.
Okay.
And if you add the Camden County, it goes on both sides, so we could add revenue for.
It's in and out, I would add it, I would add it.
I mean, I think it's gonna happen, so.
Just so, yeah, just so you guys get an agreement, I didn't wanna.
I'd add it, then he wanted to put six hundred and eighty dollars into equipment service contract.
So did you wanna do the additional fifteen hundred and hazmat response?
Well, you got it at six and, I don't know, what's the additional fifteen hundred for?
So additional five would take him to eleven, he wanted an additional fifteen hundred, take him to twelve five.
I'm good with eleven. I'm good with eleven.
Yeah.
Just realize on his, that, you know, they have a lot of costs and they used to have a lot of grid revenue, the grid revenue has fallen off a lot. So anything you continue to add to that.
He's, he's supposed to be getting some other stuff though, didn't he say that we were?
Um, his RSEC stuff, I think, the fence by different equipment.
Okay, yeah.
But again, with that, it comes additional maintenance, additional.
Yes.
Yes.
So what was the additional six eighty that he wanted on the equipment services contract?
I didn't write that down.
Sirens.
Was that for sirens?
Sirens, that's right, the batteries for the sirens.
But he wanted additional five.
Well, I think that was just the yearly ma- uh, maintenance on the sirens, wasn't it?
Yes.
That's right, yearly maintenance, that's right, you're right.
It's twice a year, three forty a pop.
Yep, you're right.
So he wanted to take equipment service back to four thousand and then he wanted to add the six eighty at the bottom of the equipment check on equipment service contract, so really he wanted to go to forty-six eighty.
Forty-six eighty.
What were the equipment service contracts he has?
I don't know what this.
I'm sure I asked him to pencil those, but I haven't seen that either, but I will look what we've got.
Okay, I'm putting it at forty-six eighty, but let's just take a look at all those equipment service contracts here at some point.
Thirteen hundred right now.
Shows actual on here.
Data, oh, it's copier leases.
No, it's not that one copier, it's something within one of those machines out there.
Hundred and eighty-four dollars a month?
Oh, I'm in the department, excuse me.
Well, yeah, you know what, we were just talking about juveniles paying three hundred and forty-three dollars a month.
It was the wrong department.
Well, that's leased though.
What department was that?
That was juvenile court, they pay one eighty-four a month.
Because that's the only way the state will reimburse.
State will only reimburse a fee lease.
Well, she has to depreciate if she goes over certain dollar amounts, if she would buy it, she would then have to depreciate it.
Good, 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 lows, bank card. What, uh, that doesn't look like equipment service contracts.
The T and T and Verizon are.
That's utilities, Verizon, oh, that's wireless, wireless, yeah, I can see the wireless.
Yeah, but there's lots of things.
What do you, yeah, that's what I was gonna look at. MIAC, two batteries for the MIAC. It's not equipment ser- he's allocating stuff the wrong way, we need to fix that. That needs to be. That needs to be vehicle equipment operations. Or hazmat response, well, the MIAC is equip- is not hazmat.
Did he want an extra five hundred in vehicle equipment?
Man, he's got a hundred and fifty dollars in communications and then he throws those Verizon and AT&T into equipment service contract.
He kinda held communications just to look at them all.
Oh, okay, we're not putting cell phones in there, where do we put cell phones at?
I don't think his Verizon is cell phones, it's like a hotspot.
What's, same difference, it's a cellphone.
It belongs on his truck. Yeah, it belongs on the truck, kinda thing.
I'm rea- I'm gonna have to leave here soon, it's almost noon, I got a noon lunch I'm supposed to be at.
So did I hear anything about the.
I think you guys need to rebalance out that equipment service contract line and.
Need to see how many, how much is actual equipment service contract.
We can do parks real quick, that's an easy one.
Then we get to trouble worse and we're beyond all the general.
I don't, I don't have any issue with parks, do you guys?
The only thing with parks is the reimbursement personnel service, we kinda talked about trying to get this to stand on its own and not reimburse Road and Ridge, they submitted and now we're just hourly salary, salary are paying for the person that works at parks. We talked about, do they need a full-time person, do we, do we do it with part-time people, we kind of butt heads because they think they need a full-time person, I think they can do it with part-time. So I took it back to what they've always gotten, the eighteen thousand reimbursed, you guys even talked about whether not you can add people or not add people.
Did we get a proposal on adding people, I haven't ever seen it.
He talked about it, about hiring a full-time person to do it.
We thought it was just part-time people mainly working in departments, they were seasonal part-time, no.
We got assistant road superintendent on grass.
I know.
So that kinda threw us off and we thought it was seasonal part-time people that you could just move over here, pay them directly out of here.
Can.
It would be easier and it should be just the.
That would eliminate the, unless they're doing projects where they're making things out of Road and Ridge.
Why don't we get Larry up here next week and we have a budget meeting, we can discuss it with him and try to get a resolution on that.
His is the next one.
Because this is the next one and we're not meeting again till next week, right?
So this is a reimbursement amount?
Monday?
Currently, that's what we reimburse them.
Monday?
Based on the salary that they submitted for the person that works up there, that's.
But that doesn't include, there's no way that vehicle equipment operation in parks is one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars, I guarantee it's five to ten thousand dollars.
Let's get him up here and talk to him.
Huh?
For the vehicle?
Vehicle and equipment.
I would, let me make a suggestion, hang on, let me just make a suggestion, let's just stop, let's get them up here first thing Monday morning, because we have a budget, I think we're doing budget Monday, right, fifteenth? So let's just do them, we're just gonna pick up right here at Parks and Rec and go right into Road and Ridge. Good?
Monday, Tuesday, do we wanna start at eight on Monday, is anybody, oh, you have your meetings and stuff on Monday, don't you?
Every, every day is different, I don't, I no longer have my just set eight-thirty conference call.
Oh, okay, that's what you used to have on Monday.
That's what I used to have.
I'm not opposed to starting at eight o'clock, I'm not opposed to starting at seven.
Monday, I can do eight, I can do eight.
Eight o'clock.
I, I might be eight oh five, but I can do it, you know.
Does anybody want tickets for the camp tournament Saturday night, because we've got a party, I've got four tickets.
Thank you, you guys will enjoy it.
Saturday.
I've got basketball in the station.
We're gonna start at eight on Monday?
I gotta wash my hair.
I'll change it.
Camp tournament sounds like something over my head.
Get a motion to stand recess.
So moved.
Second.
All those papers, say aye.
Aye.
Are we beat to eight Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, if that works for everybody, I, and, I mean, we can leave early if you want to, but I, I'm fine until noon, I think if you beat the budget longer than about four hours or. Sometimes two, it, you just wears on you, are they coming in fresh, might we can really tear it apart?
I'm okay, we have plans already, otherwise the time is sooner, yeah, this time of the year is.
That is good, Debbie. I've got a camp tomorrow. Sorry.
Christmas party.
You got a lot of takers there.
What is it, is it Christmas caroling, is that what that is? I could.
And they're all wearing tuxes.
Oh, uh, Chris first, I second. And we, we all voted for it. Next year, we gotta start working on our ugly sweater contest. I'm serious, we gotta do that.
Yeah.
That's fine.
For Christmas. Ugly sweater.